Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. Thank you. Mayor and council members, just a quick reminder. If you're going to be speaking, we do ask that you please speak into the mics. That also goes to our city management as well. Thank you.
Welcome to the Budget Workshop of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Mayor Dr.
Here.
Councilmembers Carr.
Here.
Costin.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Shepherd.
Here.
Snike.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
All present.
Item five is business. Five A is the interactive growth model. Mr. City Manager, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the starting our budget season for this year, one of the things we started last year was an initiation of an update of the city's growth model so that we can have a better idea of what our long-term needs are going to be throughout the city, both provided by the private sector and the public sector, and how we can work with the private sector and what needs government would have to provide in order to build out a vibrant community in the city of Cape Coral. We have utilized Dr. Paul Van Buskirk for probably two decades now, along with several other entities, governmental entities in the area, such as the Lee County MPO. Dave Farmer here is here with metro forecasting. They have updated our growth model with our projections and where we see things happening in the future and what we'll need to be mindful of as we plan not only this year's operating budget or this forthcoming year's operating budget, but our long-term asset improvement and capital improvement plans. So with that, I'd like to bring forward Dave so he can introduce himself, affirm, and let you know what we see on the horizon.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Again, my name is David Farmer, and I am partners with Dr. Paul Van Buskirk, who, as the city manager said, has been working for you guys for over twenty years, twenty-two years, I believe, since two thousand and two. And I hope that this presentation is well received. All we do is population forecasting and planning for the future. We only work for governments, and so everything I'm going to say today is after careful consideration and much analysis of the fine city. There we are. So I'll be talking about some background to give you all just a little brief glimpse into how the interactive growth model works, why it's different and unique, our research methodologies, some applications that you can use the data for. And then we're going to get specifically into the housing forecast, the population forecast, commercial and industrial forecasts, and tell you what we found in the analysis. Stay at my mark, and not just the Dave Farmer mark, but leave something behind, something the place is a little bit better than when I got there. So think in terms of your legacy. I believe you guys are on two-year terms. There's a joke, and it might not be well placed, but politician is a person of a four-year term and a five-year plan. I want to think of you guys as, try to think in terms of much way beyond your elected period in office. It's short. No matter how long it is, it's going to be a short period. But this is your chance to not only leave a mark, but set up a legacy. And I wouldn't vote it up or down, but why they did so. Enough preaching. So what is the IGM? Well, it's a complex, powerful set of algorithms that's used for growth management. It's in the form of a tool. It's excellent for use in long-range planning and budgeting because it does look decades into the future. It's from multiple data sets. So we begin with Lee County Property Plaza database, and then we put a lot of other databases on top of it. E nine-one, E nine-one-one address points. We put, we associate wetlands, your future land use, your zoning, and all kinds of other data so that we get the very best picture of where you stand today and what your potential for growth is in the future. It really sets us apart because most other analysts will say, "Well, how many acres of residential do you have?" And they'll use some form of zoning or code, and they'll multiply a number by three, 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 three units per acre or five units per acre, whatever, to get something. We actually look at every single one of your parcels to analyze what their potential for growth was and whether they're going to be more likely to be residential or non-residential. In the end, the model demonstrates where and when this development is likely to occur. I'm sure many of you have, well, I'll talk about Bieber here in a second. Talk about it right now. So what really makes us different is we begin with your build-out analysis. We want to understand what your potential is, where growth can occur, and what the quality, or not quality, is style. Is it going to be residential, non-residential, single-family, multifamily, et cetera? So Bieber, they do a great job for doing the entire state. And as you may or may not be aware, Bieber does not forecast for anything smaller than the county. They'll give you a current year estimate, but they won't estimate your population in the future. Some people in my profession will then say, "Well, Cape Coral is twenty-six percent of Lee County, and therefore, if the county is going to grow by a hundred thousand people, then Cape Coral is going to grow by twenty-six thousand." And I understand, it's a very easy calculation to do. We don't do it that way. We have a logistic analysis. Every single one of your four hundred zones in the Cape has its own logistic curve, so every zone grows differently, and we recognize that. Our work has been recognized as, quote, "professionally acceptable" for comprehensive planning. And if you're in my business, that's a very powerful statement that the state has said, "We are acceptable. Our data is good enough to be used for planning purposes." So key questions are, you have dozens of projects going on. Not the city, but private industry is building houses, building buildings and future job sites and so forth. And the model is modeling all of these things being developed collectively over time, and it's timing how each one is going to come online. It makes it different than our competitors. One of the questions that can help answer is, when you have a large project, such as something like Hudson Creek, I'm not picking on that, but that model is excellent for saying, "Well, what are the impacts likely to occur from that? And what are we going to need to help serve those?" So as developers propose projects, the model data can be consulted to help understand whether, again, whether they're dedicating enough land for public purposes or not. Model is also excellent for playing what-if scenarios. So what if, what if land were converted from one use to another? Like, what if we allowed all single-family lots to have two units or three units? Or what if we restricted this kind of development in this area of town? A quick example is the Bimini Basin area, right? You've got some increased density there, and we've spent years modeling that area and how it might emerge and come out of the ground. You have your very first project coming out of the ground now in the Bimini Basin. And that area, that flavor of that area is going to change quite a bit as that project finishes, and other projects then respond to it. In the end, what we want to do is, how can we plan for reduced congestion, right? One of the biggest complaints that I've heard since I've moved to Southwest Florida is driving, driving on K-Rock, we used to call our friends from up north frogheads, right? Too many people on the roads. That's not going to go away. So how can we plan to make things better? So in doing this presentation, I've actually, I tried to go from the hardcore numbers to some of the softer things to try to make this a little more interesting. This is one of the number pages. So you have about seventy-nine thousand five hundred homes at about mid-two thousand and twenty-three. That's a single-family. And then a twenty thousand, it's over twenty thousand multifamilies. For a total of just over a hundred thousand. And when compared to the census, the census had you at just under ninety-four thousand. So you've added about seven thousand housing units just since the census. Now, if you're thinking of permitting, you may have permitted more than that, but it takes a while from a permit to get issued for units to come online and so forth. Today, you have about eleven million square feet of commercial space with about seventy-five percent of that being retail or goods and twenty-five percent of that being services, as we call that. Just a quick juxtaposition that may or may not be interesting to you in a vacuum, but when we look at that across the spectrum of Florida, we often see that the ratio of services to be much higher in the thirty to forty or fifty percent range. And so we think over time, you are going to see more demand for services in the Cape. And not say a reduced demand for retail, but services are going to be even more of a part of what people are going to need. And that's important because not only do you need services, but you need those in the right locations so that people don't have to drive a long way to get to those services. And by services, I don't mean government services. I mean things like your lawyer, your tax advisor, your doctor, those sorts of things. Right now, your commercial area, you're occupied in about thirteen hundred acres of commercial space, of commercial land, and you have about twenty-two hundred acres of vacant commercial space. And that sounds like a lot and like you have enough, but I've got more to tell you when we get to the commercial analysis. Industrial-wise, you have about five million square feet on about four hundred acres and about three hundred acres of vacant land. And again, we'll talk about that later, too. So the applications with the model data then is, well, where are the high-growth areas? And when are they going to develop? That's exceptionally useful for your UEPs. I know we worked with AECom back in two thousand and nineteen to help establish the areas of the UEP and how they might build out over time. It's critical that we plan properly for those things. There's a billion dollars of infrastructure that's going to go in, and we want to make sure we get the pipes in before the people get there. Otherwise, people don't react kindly to when they have to build a well and septic system, and then two years later, the city comes along and says, "Well, good news. We're connecting you up, and now you have to abandon those and pay us another additional impact fee." We want to try to avoid that as much as possible. Part of that is, again, planning for the collective capital inputs that need to be occurring north of Pine Island Road. The other thing is, how much commercial space can these areas support? And that's critical because we don't want to encourage overbuilding of commercial and have it be unsuccessful. We want to make sure that the commercial is meeting the needs of the marketplace. And I'll talk about that more again on the commercial end of things. And then, again, how can we plan for enhanced mobility? And part of that is, where do we want density to happen so that we can increase people's access and reduce their need to jump in a car to get what they need? The data is excellent for economic development. One of the frustrating things in my business is, when you talk to retailers, because they're one of the big economic engines, they talk about rooftops. And personally, I'm not a big fan of rooftops. One of my, it's not a very good joke, but I've, when I'm in line at Home Depot, I've never been standing next to a rooftop. I've been sitting next to people, but I've never seen a rooftop buy something. And this is important because these retailers, they say, "Well, you don't have enough rooftops to support what we do." We need to convert them to talk about people because y'all do have the population to support much more of the uses that could have been, could be built here and developed in Cape Coral, which we just need to inform these people so they're aware that model data is perfect for that. The city's actually, prior back, I think it was in two thousand and eight, used our modeling data to help establish, I think it was twenty-three comprehensive plan amendments to establish commercial nodes, and those were a great step in the right direction. But as the city has continued to grow and evolve and develop, there's a need for more of these commercial nodes to be developed and dedicated so that we can minimize, again, people having to drive to Pine Island Road when maybe they can get their needs met a little more close to home, especially, again, in the north area. When we do well-plan commercial, sometimes this doesn't make sense. People think commercial means more trips. Well, it does, but commercial in the right locations actually may not reduce trips, but it'll reduce trip lengths, how far people have to drive. And keep people, if we can keep people from driving to Pine Island Road, they don't, they could get their needs met elsewhere north, that's going to help benefit and extend the life of Pine Island as it is today. All right, back to a table. So we did, since we've been modeling you guys for so long, we have so much data on you, we took a look at just how you changed from a single-family dominance to multifamily. And, you know, in the nineties and even in the early two thousands, when people talked about Cape Coral, they didn't really think it was a place where multifamily really made a lot of sense, other than, say, a duplex. Yes, there's some multifamily, especially in the southern area near Bimini Basin and such, and some scattered areas. But let's just say, it's fair to say today that the apartment business has caught on, that they now, there is not only a market, but an excellent market here. And so you have been converting. You've changed one percent, I know that's not much, but one percent in the last seven years. You've become more multifamily-ish. And when I was doing this analysis, and Laura Dobbs was reading the report, she says, "Well, that's interesting, but how does that compare?" Well, this last year, we also did a bunch of analysis for DOT along the whole coast from Manatee County South. And so we went and we looked at some of these other pre-platted areas. And when we look at north part, they have ninety-three percent single-family to only seven percent multifamily. They don't have a lot of vacant land where they can actually change their matrix. And so they're pretty much stuck in that, in that range. Lehigh Acres, closer to home, is eighty-three percent single-family and only seventeen percent multifamily. Charlotte County as a whole is eighty-two percent single-family and just eighteen percent multifamily. We think that when, as we go towards build-out for the city, you have the capacity to reach as much as thirty percent of your housing base might be multifamily. I think the minimum is going to be closer to twenty-four based on just your existing zoning and policy. ...today. So what that means is, I'm not advocating to minimize their need to have to drive or get in their car to get those needs met. So again, that's the benefit of what density can provide. Again, when we have scattered single-family, it's more difficult for them to just walk down the street to the store, right? Because they're too scattered and it's too far away. So let's start with our housing forecast. It's our fundamental belief that most people live in some sort of housing unit. And so the more housing units I have, the more people I have. So we actually model the housing units first, and then the population, and the backfills them. And as I said earlier, you have about a hundred thousand housing units today. And if you looked at two thousand and fifty, you're going to grow by over forty-two percent, right? You have a hundred and forty-two thousand single-family homes by that point in time. That's quite a bit of growth. If we look at even two thousand and thirty, you're going to grow by just twelve percent just in the next seven years. And that's, I would even argue that might be on the conservative side because we don't want to overestimate growth. We've tried very, very hard to get it right. By build-out, you're going to have a hundred and sixty-seven thousand homes, nearly double what you had in two thousand and twenty when the census was done. And between now and two thousand and thirty, we think that about twenty-one percent of all your permitting is going to be in the multifamily range. Spatial analysis shows that by two thousand and thirty, sixty-four percent of all your future residential growth is going to be north of Pine Island, which is why I was sort of hitting on the UEP thing. It's not that there's not lots in southern Cape Coral. Of course, there's lots in southern Cape Coral. But the real growth story appears to be north of Pine Island Road. And so I don't want to keep banging on that, but there's a lot that needs to be planned for that area. And if you have a question or you want to stop me, you won't break my rhythm at all. Happy to answer questions along the way. So what I've done here is I graphed the prior census data in blue, and I've mapped our data in orange after that. And as you can see, yes, it actually does follow a logistic curve. And what it's kind of imperceptible by this simple graph is that by about two thousand and forty-five, you start increasing at a decreasing rate. You're just at your inflection point now. You're just past your halfway, halfway mark of growth for your total potential. And so growth is going to be slowing down in its rate, but your growth's not going to go negative. It's just the rate of which, how fast you're accelerating is going to be declining slightly between now and two thousand and forty-five. And so here we have the populations. So today you have, or let's say about three months ago, you had about two hundred and fifteen thousand people. And you're going to add, you know, basically a hundred thousand people, a hundred and three thousand people between now and two thousand and fifty. Seventy-five percent of that. So this last slide, I said, so by two thousand and thirty, sixty-four percent of your growth is going to be north of Pine Island. By two thousand and forty, seventy-five percent of all the growth is going to be north of Pine Island Road. It's a lot to consider and take in. We think that the area north of Pine Island is going to absorb about seventeen thousand housing units and add about forty-six thousand permanent residents. Again, that doesn't include your seasonals or your transients or tourists. So it's basically the same thing as if everyone in Estero decided to move north of Pine Island by two thousand and forty. That's what's going to happen. In your entire city, it's like if all, if everyone in the city of Fort Myers moved into Cape Coral. That's the kind of population growth you're looking at. So Cape Coral, you've added about seventeen thousand homes since two thousand and sixteen. I'm sorry, seventeen, yeah, since two thousand and sixteen and seven thousand since the last census. Your build-out, and it does fluctuate over time based on how your policies change. I believe when the doctor did your first analysis, that you had a buildup population of close to four hundred thousand people. And back then, the problem was that you didn't have enough commercial land. And so remember, I talked about those twenty-three comprehensive plan amendments. Land was repurposed or rezoned from residential uses to commercial uses, and that then reduced your build-out. And then you guys, along the way, have adopted some multifamily, allowed some apartments to come in, so then that's then re-raised your build-out. We think that you're three-seventy-five, that's a pretty good range. We've, again, analyzed every parcel in the city, and we really do think that's about what your probable build-out is. However, if your policies change, the build-out could also change with that. So you have the potential right now to add about another sixty-seven thousand housing units. Yes, sir?
Thank you. Cape Coral has certainly experienced a demographic shift in the recent past, where we used to be mainly a retirement community. And I'm wondering how demographics may play into and how you've played demographic shift into the number of housing units and the number of citizens based on that demographic shift. It would seem like if you would, heads per roofs in the past would be a different number than heads per roof today.
Sure. So if you go back and look at a lot of historic data, it fluctuates a little bit, but your average household size is right around two and a half. I mean, it's almost the point where it's boring, it's two and a half. But that's, that's the fallacy of aggregate, right? That's your average. When we look at north of Pine Island, yeah, your household sizes are hitting on three, three-two, three-four, three-five, three-and-a-half people. We're seeing a lot of school-aged children showing up north of Pine Island Road. Why? Maybe it's more affordable. I'm not really sure why that's happening. I just know that is what's happening. And so, yes, we, every one of our four hundred zones has a different demographic that comes from the hard-count two thousand and twenty census in terms of household sizes and vacancy rates.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir. Happy to talk numbers, always. Try not to bore you. So I have what sounds like good news, but I'm going to rain on the parade a little bit. So in the last seven years, you've added about eight hundred thousand square feet of commercial space, and that, on its face, sounds like, wow, that's close to a million. That's a lot. Except the population that moved in over that period of time, that basically thirty-five thousand people, they needed closer to two and a half million square feet. So you've, we've actually, I was shocked when we looked at your data from between two thousand and sixteen and today, your per capita available supply of existing commercial space has actually decreased in the last seven years. And you're already at like fifty-two or fifty-three square feet. We would expect to see you closer to seventy square feet on a per capita basis. To give you an idea, Lee County is ninety-three square feet on average on a per capita basis. Collier County is a hundred and seven square feet. Charlotte County, I think they're at eighty-three, but they're growing. They're increasing their commercial. So again, we want to, I'm not saying commercial for commercial sake, but as we think about multimodal, multimodal, and we think about development, we think about the spatialness of the Cape, certainly there are areas where we should be encouraging Burnstall Road being one of those corridors, more commercial space to help meet the needs of the people that are there and the ones, more importantly, the ones that are coming. I hit every point? Yeah, I did. So here's your build-out analysis. So you're going to have a hundred and twenty-six thousand single-family homes, about forty-one thousand multifamily. The commercial, again, this is based on not what your capacity is. This is based on the model's times. This is what your needs are. You're going to need twenty-two million square feet. You have about eleven today, so you need to add about another eleven million square feet. It's going to need to occupy about thirty-five hundred acres. Your vacant commercial land at build-out is zero, and I'll get to that in a civil, to spoil it, spoil later on. You don't have enough commercial land. Industrial building area, you're going to have a build-out of seven-point-four million on seven-hundred-and-thirty-one acres. The problem is, you don't have any build-out. And again, I'll get to that here in just a second. So I don't know if you can see this very well. You know, it's really hard sometimes to translate our work into something that is relatable, that can make sense. So that means every red dot represents ten new people. Now, it's not surprising, as we look through time, two thousand and thirty, two thousand and forty, two thousand and fifty, that, yes, we see some red down, down south because there are vacant lots, and there's going to be some redevelopment happening, of course. But you look, the story is really north of Pine Island Road. There are a lot of people that are going to be showing up in the very near future. I'm not trying to scare you, just want to make you aware so that when you're thinking about budgeting and planning, that these are in your head. Here's a juxtaposition of two thousand and thirty to two thousand and fifty. The darker areas are more built out, the lighter areas are less built out. And if you don't mind, I have a little graphic here that steps through time in tenure increments, and it shows the logical progression of how the area is likely to develop. This is based on our four hundred zones, and I'm showing each one of those zones is color-coded in this little quick graphic. If you'd like a copy of this, staff can send it to you. It's readily available. So for commercial, the key is to plan for a high quality of life. If we don't plan for it, it doesn't happen accidentally. And while I understand you're the government, you don't build commercial things. I get that, completely get that. But it is your job to, well, to empower your planning staff, especially your long-range planning, to make sure there's enough land in the right places allocated so that natural growth and meeting the needs of the population can be met without having to go through a lot of hoops, so to speak. Developers look at unentitled land as risky, and they're less likely to take those on and go through a bunch of public hearings to get something that they think will meet the needs of the community than to buy something that is basically ready to go. So if I can encourage you and your planning staff is to have more sites that have clear indication of what the entitlement, what the city would like to see there. A great example of that might be Seven Islands, right? You guys gave some entitlements to the Seven Islands project, and now a developer doesn't really have to wonder what they could do. All they can now is wonder how they can finance it and what the demand is for those things. And that's a step in the right direction. I'm encouraging you, the same thing needs to be done for commercial around the Cape as well. As the population increases, the demand, you might think, "Well, Dave, we got a target here. We have Walmart here, we have maybe, what, thirteen Publixes or neighborhood grocery stores?" And, you know, that's okay, but that's today. As we add this hundred thousand people, they're going to need that again and more. Not double what you have today, but they're going to need a lot more. I'm looking to the specifics here. When we see the lack of affordable and reliable transportation options, it can act as also as a barrier to employment and economic stability in an area. Mixed use, we see this, yes, sir? Right, so, right, so, well, it's sort of tied, let me, let me go to the next slide, and I'll try to tie that in. So we see that communities embrace the concept of mixed use, and we see it thrown around just as a sort of a general term. And mixed use means different, different things in different places. You don't necessarily have a lot of old dilapidated commercial areas that are going to repurpose and now turn into these big multifamily projects. But you do have areas around the city, nodes in the city, where maybe some of the commercial space, the market says that use isn't quite needed there, and people maybe want to redevelop into something that has a residential component. I'd like to encourage you to strongly consider saying yes to those, those sorts of things. And while these pictures here show more modern mixed use, if we can add people in where you have existing commercial uses, that is going to greatly help with this multimodal in terms of getting people closer to the things that they need and reducing their need on a car, increasing their ability to get to, to get to work, again, without using motorized vehicles, and create a more prosperous sort of lifestyle. These areas have the possibility of creating these little village centers. So Bimini Basin might be a good example of an area that's likely to start evolving into sort of its own sort of center area. First, we have this one project coming on. As more projects start tacking on next to it, which we think is likely to occur, we're likely to see, again, more people moving into an area that has already existing commercial spaces and can revitalize those areas and make them more in demand because we're adding the thing they need, people, to the area where these existing uses are located. In areas where we have nothing but people, again, we need to start adding some commercial spaces, meaning the entitlement in these nodes, so that we can encourage, meaning the entitlement in these nodes, so that we can encourage, again, having these uses closest to, closer to the people that need them. We're looking at basically trying to create synergy between land uses, which also then turns into often an increase in property values, which it turns into an increase in revenue without the need of actually raising So shopping centers. I know that the, the death of retail has been greatly exaggerated. I know that my wife uses Amazon. There are frequent flyers at our house. But with that said, shopping centers are necessary, especially neighborhood shopping centers where people get their essential services. And I'll, I'll show you some definitions here in a moment. They offer employment for the, usually the young and the old in the area, but they also provide uses, again, the things that people need closer to where they are, so they don't have to drive very far. They also act as a complementary use to ancillary uses. When we see a new neighborhood shopping center go in, we generally see that much space and more developed around it to support those uses now that that node has been created. So this is where success sort of begets more success, and you can see this all along Pine Island Road and especially at, at Pine Island and, and Burnt Star Road. And so, again, these well-planned trip, well, well-planned shopping centers, I'm gonna show you a map here in just two slides. Having them well-placed will greatly help in reducing trip lengths. And, again, the need to create more roads, we might not need to expand the roads we have if we had more uses closer to where people are. So, some definitions and then the map. So a neighborhood shopping center. So when I throw this term around, I find that people have different concepts of it. And so, we're not talking about Seven-Eleven. Certainly, a Seven-Eleven is in your neighborhood, and you can go shopping there. But we're talking about, and not any favoritism, but your typical Publix or your neighborhood Walmart, a place where you can go, where you can get your groceries, and then you can go to the Hallmark store, and you got Walgreens, and maybe there's a gas station, and maybe a McDonald's out front. More, more of my daily needs met without having to go too far from my house. On average, in the Cape, they're between ten and twenty acres. They range between fifty-five thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand, the average being just over a hundred. And they always include a grocery store, usually some restaurants, and, and offices, real estate offices, dentist's office, those sorts of things, again, to get things close to the people. They, on your average, is you need a neighborhood shopping center for about every seventeen thousand people, sixteen thousand eight hundred people. So when those number of people show up, they generally indicate a need for one more. Now, with that said, I'm not saying when sixteen thousand people move here, suddenly Publix needs to open a new store. Certainly, there's enough capacity in the system to absorb that. But when another sixteen thousand people show up, then you start straining resources, and we wanna see these, these stores being able to be developed in real time so that they're not having to come back after the fact and maybe even have to pay too much for the land and maybe even constrain the ability to provide these resources that people are gonna need. Next, talk about a community shopping center. And the easiest way I can define a community is it's more destination-based. Like, think like, not just Home Depot, it's a collection of three or four of these big boxes. It's a place where you go, and you have your little checklist on Saturdays, and you go through it. These are vital. You have, you have six of them or seven, six of them already right now in the Cape, and you're gonna be needing more of them into the future. And there's opportunities around the Cape for, for these to be, be developed, but we need to make, make the entitlement a little more clear, I think, to encourage these to occur. In the right locations is key. Okay, so I fibbed, I guess it's three slides before the map. So the purpose of this table, it's sort of the all-in-one. This is, everything I've been talking about is now sort of displayed on. You have the population, the housing at the top population, and you look at the demand for, for additional neighborhood shopping centers. So by 2050, you're gonna need six more. You're gonna need three more community shopping centers. And if, if I, I have a concern about both of those, both the neighborhoods and the communities. When I was searching for land, the model says, hey, this area needs a neighborhood shopping center. And I look everywhere, and you know what I see? I see single-family lots. I held my nose, and I shoved one on a seven-acre site, clearly not big enough to support a neighborhood shopping center, but, but you had some land of its own commercial, and so we, we put it there. Actually, I'm just gonna go ahead and jump to the map. Well, actually, this bottom point here is very important. We calculate your vacant, your, your existing commercial lands without new entitlements are gonna be completely depleted by 2055. Basically, thirty years from now, you won't have any land left. And, again, going back to one of my first statements, you'll never have more vacant land than you have today. Today, now is the time to start allocating those lands, at least in terms of future land use, if not at least zoning. Again, the, the further you're willing to offer the development community entitlements, the more likely they are to do the right thing in the right locations because you've set the framework for it, versus having them come in and buy some random piece of property and then entitle it and try to explain why it's the right use in the right location. All right, the map. So I know this is a little hard to see. I think you guys have access to the slides. What I wanna point to things that you don't have to look at, don't worry about the, the pink little shopping carts, and don't worry about the old shopping bags. Those are existing things. Those, and you can see, it's not too shocking, along Pine Island and into the south, we have a lot of those. What I'd like you to look at is north of that area. Now, this map does not depict the ideal locations for them. This map shows you, if you start counting these little shopping center, or little shopping carts, there's five of them. And I would say probably maybe two or three of them are in the right location. We're, we're missing, I don't know if I can do this or not. Hey. So we're missing things in these east-west corridors. We're sorely needing commercial space over in here, not buried in some residential neighborhood, but there are, there's, there's portions in here. Without naming names, an area that does come to mind, I think you guys call it Academic Village. Academic Village, that has a capacity to add a community shopping center and still have a gazillion acres left over. I would like to encourage you, would love to put a, a community shopping center in that location. Also, along the Burnt Star Road over here, there are areas that are, that would be ideal, again, for neighborhood shopping centers. So think about your east-west. The more we can put here, so I, we need, we need five more things, the closer we can put these stores to where the people are located, the less driving will be necessary, the less unnecessary driving will be necessary. You know, it's a free country. Don't wanna keep everyone at home, but why make people drive further than they have to or add to the traffic on Pine Island Road if we don't have to? Any questions? Okay, so industrial demand. We're showing, this is, this is not your total demand, but your incremental increase. Yes, sir?
Just a quick question. When you're looking at the data and the availability of services, do you look outside of our jurisdiction at all? Like, for instance, proximity in the northern area of our city to services that are outside of our jurisdiction? Do you consider that as part of the need?
So, as the city manager said, we also do a lot of work for the Lee County MPO. So, in, in a vacuum, for just you, the answer's not really. Yes, do we look at right at the bleeding edge? Yes, of course we do, because if a neighborhood shopping center is right across the street from your city boundary, yes, we know what's there, and we can see what it's doing. But even as I, we analyze all of Lee County, and we're actually, we're working on the shopping centers for the rest of Lee County. Right now, we've already finished you guys, but we're working on everything else. These needs, these are still your needs. You need six more neighborhood shopping centers and, and three more. I can't even remember the need for Lee County overall. It's like they need twenty-five community shopping centers by twenty-sixty or something like that. I can't remember. It's a lot. So you, what I'm telling you, this is a great question, is that is your, hate to use it, proportionate share, if you will. But yes, we do look outside and, and see those things and, and recognize them. But also recognize that there are people that are, don't live acres. And so, that's an aggregate number, an all-in, right? With that, here's what it doesn't mean. You don't need one, two-hundred-acre parcel, right? And we don't need two hundred one-acre parcels. It needs to be a flexibility of those things. We're gonna need some, some one-acre pieces, some five-acre pieces, some ten-acre pieces, and they need to be scattered around the city, not randomly. Industrial uses need to be well-connected to the transportation network, but we need to establish these so we have enough, enough industrial land to support you through build-out. If we can get the trades living closer, like the plumbers and electricians living closer to the people they're servicing, not the people building new construction, but the people that, that service these things, they're important. Let's not put them all on Pine Island, right? Relegate them there. There are areas, little pockets around the city where we can be establishing smaller, tasteful industrial areas to help support these smaller uses, and then we can focus on some of the city-owned property for maybe some of the bigger ten, twenty, thirty-acre parcels that might be necessary for future employment centers and industrial centers. Okay, so in conclusion, so we're gonna need to recognize the potential of adding a hundred thousand people just in the next twenty-six years. You're, how you use that vacant land is going to be, it's gonna spell the future for the city. If we don't react and, and allocate the uses that are necessary that we can see today, it's gonna create a lot, cut a lot, a lot of inefficiencies, additional spending on transportation resources that might not be necessary, more cars, probably also more unhappy people trying to drive and get commuters getting to where they need to go. Monitor that aggregate, and so how much total commercial land we have, and then spatially, where is that located, and make sure that we have it spread out around the city to meet the needs of not just one neighborhood, but all the neighborhoods. Especially north of Pine Island Road, to help, again, help reduce trip lengths and unnecessary trips to the Pine Island Road corridor, should they not be necessary if we can meet their So also, when thinking about the future too, appreciate that, you know, you, your staff, you have a wonderful staff at the city, and there's a lot of institutional knowledge. And in retaining your seasoned professionals is, is key. We work, we only work for government. I work in a lot of locations, and almost all of them are struggling to hold on to their, to their seasoned institutional staff. And I just wanna encourage you to, to try to hold on to your people because it's vitally important, your future. If we don't have the people that know how we got here, it could impair the road into the future. Good planning requires good employee retention. Final thoughts. So I wanna just point this out to you. This might be a little premature for you guys. This is actually in Collier County. This was the first Walmart in Collier County back in the late eighties, early nineties. It was very successful, so they bought a piece of land across the street and built a, a big super Walmart there. And when, when that happened, this area was, I think it was a hundred and eighty thousand square feet of commercial space. I think Walmart was only a hundred thousand of that, but it began a twenty-five-year, very slow, very painful decline, to the point where in 2012, I think this place was paying a hundred thousand a year in property taxes. Thankfully, a developer came along and found out that Collier County was willing to zone this for multifamily. And so the developer came in and proposed three hundred and thirty, tear down the shopping center, build three hundred and thirty multifamily units. I think there's a small amount there, affordable. This is way before Live Local Act, of course. And then they're gonna build sixty thousand square feet of, of services, restaurants out front. And the county and I did an analysis, financial analysis of this, and we see that a, a conservative, like a minimum, their property taxes next year are gonna be one point two million for this site. So without raising any taxes at all, we've, we've, we've increased the revenue to the county by, by twelve hundred percent. And the fact that, since this was prior commercial, right, it already has a six-lane road in front of it. It already has the water and sewer. It already has the fire station. It, it's right next to a massive employment center, happens with the county, but it's right next to this massive employment center. It's a win-win-win across the board. So as you look forward to the future, if these same kind of ideas come along where something, some use, whatever it is, it didn't quite work out, there's these opportunities where we can repurpose and revitalize and, and add revenues, precious revenues to the city, without, again, without raising taxes at all, just by making better use of the infrastructures that we've already invested in over the prior Any questions? Yes, sir?
Yeah, so recognizing that this is a balancing act between
Yes.
residential and commercial-industrial. There's a suggestion here that we look at our comp plan and future, future land use zoning up in the north, areas where we have single-family lots, and change, carve out an area where there are, are abundance of vacant lots, and look at changing that to commercial-industrial where appropriate. Is that, is that the suggestion here, that we, we have to redefine what our comp plan and future land use looks like now, the plan for the future, because we know that our commercial-industrial space will be depleted, if it isn't already, in the future? Is that the suggestion here?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And to get into the weeds for just a moment, and if I say the wrong thing, someone step on my toes and tell no one wrong. So there's property that, say you own, but it's, it's deed-restricted. You actually have commercial property where I would love to put a neighborhood shopping center, but because the land came from the original developer of the Cape, there's these restrictions. It says you can only build parking. Well, if I don't build a building, I don't need much parking there, do I, right? And it's, the, the planning is so nineteen-fifties, envision these little tiny shops, you could never accommodate what we call a, you know, neighborhood shopping center today, not because there's not enough land, there's plenty of land. But, but the, the shape and the way of the, the legal way the land can be used makes, makes it useless. So I would encourage, let's hire some, figure out a legal way to get that property back into useful. Yes, you own it, but let's get it into, let's, let's get people paying property taxes on it. Let's get it developed and provide these uses. The intended use, obviously, was to have commercial on that property, but today we can't. And, and I think, I don't know the solution, but I know there's smart people out there that can find that solution.
None of that is north of Pine Island Road, though, right?
Yes, yeah, oh, yes.
Where the vacant lots are?
Yep. We, we use them for hurricane debris.
Oh, it's Kismet?
Santa Barbara, Kismet, Diplomat, Andalusia, Pine Island Road.
Just recovering those? I'd be doing backflip. Well, I can't do those anymore, but I would try to do back, backflips for you, if we could just, just, just do that. But, yes, more than that, more than that's necessary. Yes, sir, Mr. Shepherd?
You talked about changing the zoning on our property, and you, you gave an example of the Walmart that was torn down, zoning was changed, and it brought more taxes to the community. That wasn't obvious, to me, that, that increase isn't all extra money because services are gonna have to be increased. What's the percentage of that new income really being absorbed by the additional services that that density change made?
Well, so, albeit the, the analysis was very simple, and that's an excellent question. But if you remember, the, the, in that original two hundred, a hundred and eighty thousand square feet of commercial space, it needed, it had a demand for fire coverage, it had a demand for EMTs, it had a demand for police coverage, and so those are already covered in it. When we think about parks in the area, there's enough existing parks in the area that no, no more need to be built. The road capacity is more than enough to absorb those units, again, because we're reduced, we're actually reducing trips as a matter of removing that. So I can't look at you with a straight face and say there's no additional costs. Of course, there's gonna be some additional costs. But most of those are offset by user fees. Like water and sewer, that's a user fee thing, so they pay for what they use. In terms of adwarem taxes being expended to help support that, I would argue minimal, minimal taxes are needed to be poured back into that.
And my second question is, with the growth that you're looking at, and if, you know, do we have enough property for expanding city services, or is that something we should be looking at as well?
I, you know, I haven't really looked in terms of the administration. You, you guys own a lot of land. If you wanna, go ahead, sir.
So one, one of the things that we're gonna do this year is we're gonna go into phase two with metro forecasting and Dave, and we're gonna, they have sub-modes for fire, police, parks and rec, school boards, you know, they, they have transportation nodes. I don't know, some departments have their own forecasting models, and they may not use metro, but a majority of our departments do. And so what we're gonna do this year is look at those sub-modes and say, okay, here's all the land we have set aside for parks, commercial parks, or, community parks, neighborhood parks, regional parks. Do we have enough nature parks? Here's what we have set aside for utilities, lift stations, pump houses, the future, you know, the north wastewater plant, is it enough? Here's what we have set aside for fire, and we need X amount of, you know. That's, that's the phase. Now that we have the, the growth model reset, where we're gonna be, basically what it shows on that chart is through 2040, you know, we're in an all-out growth mode at an increasing rate, not even slowing down. So, you know, that will help us dial in where we already have land, where we need land. To the question earlier about the recommendation about changing zoning, that'll be important for us to do with our new development services director, right? So if you look at that map in Gator Circle, there's no commercial. Well, it's just not feasible or not, not realistic that everybody from Gator Circle is gonna have to drive out to Del Prado and either south to, to So Kismet, Burn Store Northwest and, and Gator Circle.
First off, thank you for the, the presentation and the information. You know, I think it's very important to try to do these analysis periodically because it'll give us the direction and the information, you know, to make important decisions moving the city forward. I think that, you know, when you look at some of this data here that you've provided, in some cases, it's almost shocking of where we'll probably end up. And I always look back over the last 50 years of our city, we've kind of morphed into where we are today. And I think we probably could have done a better job in our planning over the last 50 years. But I'm not a guy that looks at the rearview mirror, I'm always looking out the windshield. But I want to make sure that moving forward, we do that planning. We know where we're going to probably end up and make sure we provide the infrastructure, and I think that's very important. And that's what our job is, to make sure the infrastructure there is for the growth of moving forward. And I think we do a good job when it comes to public safety. I think we've been very proactive and we've done a good job to keep up with the growth and plan for the future. But I think in some areas, we've fallen behind and we have to, first off, be able to admit that and recognize it and then take a look at it and see how we're going to move forward. And this type of information to me is extremely beneficial. You know, when you take a look at some of the, one of the big things for me is the comparison between the Cape and the county with the per capita when it comes to the commercial, what's really out there. And it's funny, you mentioned the, some of the deed restrictions. I know when our new city attorney was hired, you know, last year, one of the questions he asked is, you know, what's concerning? What, what do you think that we should be working on? And that was one of the items that I had mentioned because there are some prime parcels in our city that are, been sitting dormant for many years because of these restrictions. And there, there's got to be an answer there. I'll be honest with you, I'm not an attorney, so I don't know that answer, but there's somebody out there that has those answers. So that's something that I agree we need to, to, to work on to make those particular parcels viable for some type of development. I always say if you want to change in the results, you need to change in the approach. And if you look over the last 50 years, our approach many times have been the same. And I think every one of us sitting here has advocated when we were running for office about commercial and residential ratio between 92 to 8%, 90 to 10%, whatever that ratio is today. But we keep making the same decisions. You look back on council, you know, a lot of times developers want that multifamily and a lot of people say, well, why aren't you taking that multifamily? Because it's more of a revenue for the city when it comes to property taxes. Well, that's not helping the commercial aspect of the growth of our city. And sometimes you have to take a step back before you take two steps forward. And I think that's important for us to recognize. One thing that I would ask, with all of the information that you've provided, to maybe have a summary report and just some high point recommendations. Over the next 10 years, you want to concentrate on this from years 10 to 20. You want to, you want to make sure that, you know, these are going to be some issues that you're going to have to face in 20 to 30. You're the expert, we're not. And I'm a firm believer, if, if you're not the expert, you got to lean on the advice of the experts. So I think if you could provide that to us as a council, it would be extremely beneficial and help us when we're making our day-to-day decisions. And I think it's important when we make decisions, you know, we have a strategic plan, we have a comprehensive plan. Question that we need to start asking ourselves and, and I'm probably just as guilty as other people, sometimes we don't ask that question. Does it fit in our strategic plan? Does it fit in our comprehensive plan? If it doesn't, then you might have to make that bold decision not to go in the direction just because the developer wants to go in that direction. So I think that's, that's our homework as a council, to make sure we recognize what the need is, what the plan is, and stay the course. Because when you don't stay the course, that's when you morph into a city 50 years later that really wasn't the plan. I don't want that to happen again. So thank you for the information.
A lot of what you're speaking to, real quick, you know, is the legacy that I'm encouraging you embrace that you, you have an opportunity to leave your mark that will be felt 10, 20, 30 years from now. And it's not, it's not sexy, but it's, it's so necessary. And your, your fellow and future residents are going to owe you a great debt of gratitude for embracing that and taking that on. Also, there is a report, this was, this was, this was long, this was the summary of a report we wrote, published it in December. It doesn't go through the, in the next 10 years do this and 20 years do that, but it does provide recommendations and we'd be happy to engage and do more work on that if you'd like, but I think we can make that available to you. Yes, sir.
My last, my last question is, for instance, we have developers that I've met with that want zoning change to add high-density residential apartment complexes and things like that. You even said earlier that it's, we're going to have a lot of growth with that. I think added information that could help council would be how it should be spread out through the city, not all in certain locations because of the problems that it can create. So that would be some more information that can help us on the future decisions on locations, showing, you know, is there a reason why it should be spreading throughout the city in a more evenly?
Right. And just to give you an overall, this is my, I don't know if your planning staff would agree with me, but my personal perspective is look for intersections. That, that's probably one of the best places to put a use like that. I, I would prefer not to see a 400 multifamily complex surrounded by 300 single-family units. What, now I got to get all those people out of there, they've got to go through all, it, it's less ideal. Sometimes, you know, there's private property rights, I'm not denying those, I'm just saying, I, in a perfect world, we would have the higher density things closer to nodes that we can create to increase the efficiencies of these intersections and not pick a bunch of people drive through single-family roads to get to them.
So with that, with that, we're calling back to what Dave said, you, we can, we can incentivize with higher entitlement rights and, and development rights to get those acres available for the commercial. So we have a prime, two prime examples happened within the last three months where we, we've tried to work with the existing code, but tried to get the developers to do more or even to stop what they're, what they wanted to do. One of those is at the corner of Pine Island Road in Veterans. It was a 35-acre tract. The developer came in and gave us the, the minimum amount of commercial, which is seven acres, 20% of the 35 acres. And you see from the presentation, a neighborhood center is 10 acres minimum to 20. So the, the 20% that we got on one of the best corners that is going to be in the hottest markets in our city, if it goes seven, seven acres of commercial, we just lost an opportunity for the next 100 forever. So that's where, you know, unfortunately, we have Senate Bill 250 that ties our hands, we can't make a change to require a minimum of 10 acres. So we're stuck with the code that we wrote for now. But these are definitely things to be considering for 2025. And then between now and then, the other example we had was up off of Del Prado where somebody came in and they wanted more multifamily. And we said, look, you're right near 41, you, this is going to be a prime node, there's things happening in that area, this could become a neighborhood to a commercial, a community center. And you all stood your ground and said, we need to think about the future. So you, you've done it and you have been doing it, you've just been doing it kind of without this data and this knowledge, and this will only help you as more and more of those ideas come to cash out in what's hot in the market today, you can think about the future and not, now know, well, wait a minute, we're going to need six more neighborhood centers, we're going to need three more community centers, we're going to need more industrious, we're going to need, was it twice as much industrial land, right?
Just, you know, 200 acres that we had today.
Yeah. And so, you know, those are things now that you will have the, now you have the information for the rest of your understand the foundation of why we're telling you what we're saying. These are great tools. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir. Yeah, I, I agree. I think, first of all, thank you for being here.
Pleasure.
What you and your team have done for us in the past and now continue to do, I think is, is one of the greatest assets that we have from a data perspective here in the city. And frankly, I wish we leaned into it a little more historically and I'm hoping to collectively, like the mayor said, right that wrong. But I think it's important to know, especially as we look at this data and we move forward for the next two years, I think, Mr. Mayor Manager, you had pointed on it, is the limitation to Senate Bill 250, which was unfortunately brought forth by our own representative, I think, Mike Gilumbardo, and, and he kind of stepped on our toes on that. And so what we've done or are not able to do in, in that capacity for the next two years, unfortunately, with, with the stroke of that pen, has, has created some generational changes, I think, that, that are going to be longstanding. But looking beyond that, I think when you talk about recommendations and go back to Mr. Hayden's point, as far as rezoning, I'm not sure whether you are or are not able to make an evaluation here, but are you familiar with Burn Store Road, 300 acres that the city owns?
I am.
And now what do you, what do you think in regards to that as far as what, what would be the best use of that moving forward, considering all the data points that we've discussed?
Well, so obviously a mixture of uses, not, not one single use should be there, but I, that, that area could provide, right on Burn Store, some, some multifamily, maybe makes sense, some industrial. We, we think that maybe even 100 acres of that, that might be too much, hard to say, but could be dedicated for that, some, for employment centers as well. Also some small light industrial for, again, the trade services. I think, you know, we could do an analysis, but you could also hire, have your staff do an analysis of what to do with that, the most important thing, and hope this comes out the right way. When I've asked about that property, when, the answer I always get is, we don't know. And I would say, going back to my earlier statement, developers hate risk and when, and when there's, it's unknown, no one's going to be attracted to something when the city says, we don't know what's going to happen with it. If you say, you know, maybe it's not, it's not going to be exactly this, this and this, but, you know, a range of between, between 5 and 30% is going to be industrial and between 10 and 15% is going to be for multifamily and the rest of it is going to be for other commercial uses. It gives people an idea, oh, okay, that's what they're thinking. And I think it would encourage, incentivize development by, by reducing the risk and letting the public, the development community know what the city has in mind and what they think might, might work well there. It's this lack of entitlement that's, I think, hurting that area.
Sure. That was kind of the genesis of my question, was trying to maybe get some assistance with fixing that, we don't know, and, and morphing it into something that we are a little bit more confident in so that we can then, of course, pitch it. We were in the same seat last year, we talked about that 300, and here we are today not knowing any, any more about it, so.
And so in my, in the earlier point, just, I want to put a hammer on the nail real quick. So I say your, your short 200 acres, the solution is not take that 300 and carve out 200 and say, see, Dave, we, we fixed that problem. Well, that's 200 acres all in one location, these things, that can solve part of your problem, maybe 100 acres of it, the other parts need to be developed around the city. You also own or used to own 8, 10,000 lots? I can't remember. You guys, you got the, it probably looked like a, a bad idea back in 2008 or '09 when you guys bought these from, I think, some financial institutions. Genius in the rearview mirror. You guys now have all this vacant land and I would encourage to the, to the mayor's point of, hey, maybe we need to take some of these undeveloped single-family lots and convert them to commercial, where you could use some of that inventory to trade with people, you know, and just pulling things out of thin air, which I probably shouldn't do in a public hearing, but, you know, hey, we like that lot, we'll give you two of ours over these other areas if you want to trade that one to us so that we can start aggregating and, and again, more carrot, less stick, incentivizing people to do the right thing, as much as possible anyway.
Thank you.
Yes.
Council members, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. What, what, other than census data for your, for your years in between census, so to speak, what, what data source do you use for population?
So we calculate the population based on the number of housing units. And so we have every single housing unit, and I mean every single one tagged in our model. We, we know every single family home duplex, triplex, quadplex, not just the fact it's multifamily, we can tell you how many units are in each one and which location, and then we apply the demographics to that. There are times and places where we make exceptions to that. For instance, and maybe this is not answering your question, but so down on the Cape Coral Parkway, you have a complete, a commercial area. And if you look at the census demographics, it's going to, it's going to report to you this stuff down south of Bimini Basin, highly seasonal, very low, how, like, like vacancy rates of 40, 45, 55% and household sizes of 1.6, 1.8. Well, you have a brand-new apartment complex going there. You know how you go out of business knowing apartments is by not having that thing full, right? So the vacancy rate of that apartment complex is going to be basically zero, right? Not, not just today, but multifamily owners can't afford to have 5% of their supply just being unrented over and over again. Plus, the household size will be higher in those, so we'll make some adjustments when we know certain things about certain projects to make sure we're accurately reflecting that population. With that said, though, we also, we're too close to the census now, but as we get into 2026, we'll start looking at what's called ACS data, American Community Survey. We don't prefer to use that because what they do is they sample between 1 and 3% of the population and then they extrapolate it across the entire population. So if there's an error, that can get magnified greatly. So we, we turn to the 2020 census as well as prior censuses, looking at the trends in areas, and we use the best information possible at the given time to calculate the population.
Thank you.
Good. I see Sharon, you got your hand up back here.
Hi.
I just had a question. We looked at industrial and commercial, the city manager and I have to talk about post-secondary and where there is the power to drive for economic
Okay. I'll repeat. Can you hear me? My question was institutional. So we saw industrial and commercial. The, the city manager and I have had conversations about our need for post-secondary, how that's a driver to our economy. So when we're looking at that, is there any consideration in that need when we're talking about limited amount of commercial space, how we should be looking at that as well?
Okay, just to quickly clarify, when you say institutional, then you said post-secondary, you're talking about education?
Right, educational.
Okay.
Well, I'm looking at our, the way our zoning is, but yes.
Because also inside institutional are our, our assisted living facilities, independence, our memory care, and that's what we see, actually taking up most of the space. And that's in that, that number, when I said, like, Lee County has 92 square feet on a per capita basis, you guys have 52, that includes your, your institutional spaces as well. Maybe not your post-secondary education. I will say, and this doesn't exactly answer your question, the Lee County School Board has done an excellent job of retaining parcels. At this point in time, we don't see any deficit for future schools in Cape Coral because they, they acquired that land so long ago. They were very, very smart to get it early in the right locations. It's, it's not all in one location, it's nice and scattered. But if you're talking about things like maybe Florida Southwest or something like that, I know that the Hudson Creek, I think there's an entitlement there that allows a community college to go there. That, that, that seems a bit remote in terms of that area. So as far as your question goes, that's why you need to allocate more land. When we say commercial, it sort of includes those institutional uses as well, non-residential, if you will. But we could look specifically at the post-secondary if you'd like. We haven't, but we can.
Thank you.
Yeah, one other thing I'd like to mention too is, you know, when you look at some of our zoning that we have in, in our city, one thing I've always said was, take commercial for instance. If you look at our commercial zoning in our city, it's pretty broad of what you can put there. And, you know, you always hear a lot of people saying, boy, you know, you got $2 stores within a quarter mile, you got two car washes within a quarter mile. I think one of the things that we need to do is really take a look at our future land use and our zoning throughout the city. And I know with Senate Bill 250 right now, we're, we're a little, as one of the other council members stated, you know, we're kind of handcuffed at the moment, but we won't be forever. But I think what we could start doing now while we are handcuffed is do some additional planning for, like, commercial for instance. Where I've come from in my profession in the past, there's several levels of commercial. You have C1, C2, C3. And you could almost dictate what type of businesses go in a particular area just by that. And I think we really need to take a look at that and, and see if that is a viable option for us to help dictate that and see if that is a viable option for us, to help dictate, to some degree, on the growth of our city with the additional lots that we have to be built out. One of the other things I think we need to take a look at, you know, we need to take and look at mixed use. You know, a lot of times, mixed use is a win-win for everyone. You get the multifamily component, you get the avalanche tax benefit, and also you can get a commercial benefit out of it, too. So I know right now, our mixed-use definition is extremely broad. It needs, needs to be more defined, so we can say, "Okay, if it's a mixed-use project." We have some hard numbers as far as percentages between commercial and residential. And I think that's going to be extremely important. So there are just a few steps that I think, while we are handcuffed because of Senate Bill 250, we can start planning, because that, that will subside at some point in time, hopefully. You know, I know I have a, a meeting on Monday with our Senate President, Senator Pasadena, on this very topic, because of the rippling effect that it has caused our city in a detriment, and our city being able to move forward in some areas with growth. I don't know where that's going to end up. But for right now, we know for the next couple of years, if nothing changes, we are handcuffed. But that doesn't mean that we sit back and do nothing. So I, I think it actually gives us an opportunity to reevaluate how we've been doing things. Is there a better way of doing things as far as zoning and future land use that will maybe help us in the areas of deficiencies that, that you've outlined here today?
Mm-hmm.
So thank you.
You know, adding multifamily to existing commercial areas is probably one of the best ways to move towards mixed use, because the commercial's already there, and you're just adding more customers, and you're not going to probably get, or probably see fewer complaints. It can be a little, sometimes the public can react negatively when we propose commercial areas in areas that don't have any commercial space now, because they, it's residential, I want it to be residential. And I, and I understand that, but sometimes the, the need of the, of the many outweighs the desires of the few. And by building or allocating this land now, I would argue that maybe your current residents might be, on the periphery of these future commercial areas, might be unhappy. I would argue that there's, there's buyers. There's tens of thousands of buyers coming this way, and the sooner you get that on the books, that this is where the commercial land is, more people are informed that, "Oh, that is going to be a commercial area," and they won't have a, a notion that, "No, my area is all, is residential and will always be residential." Again, not saying anti-residential, just saying that if we add some commercial in these strategic locations, even with opposition from the public, in the end, I think, I think they're going to appreciate having the shorter commute and increased access. You know, sometimes whenever a Publix goes in, the property values around it shoot way up. Why? Because it's convenient. People appreciate and like convenience, even if they're fighting you in the public hearing, where you're trying to approve that parcel for the 100,000 square feet of neighborhood shopping center. Again, want to encourage more carrot than stick. Sticks tend not to work well, but also understand there's also legal parameters, and your, your hands are cuffed right now, but still, today's still the time to be planning for the future.
Again, thank you. Any other questions from council?
I have one more.
Yes, sir.
It's just something that's been talked about. I'm not necessarily in agreement with it, but I just want to hear your, your recommendation. There's been talk of people wanting to add, like, mother-in-law's quarters to their residential site, you know, or somewhere for their older child to, to move back home. What is your opinion on that?
Yeah, auxiliary dwelling units. You know, on your typical 80-by-125 lot, I honestly don't know how well that works. With that said, in the city of Naples, I have seen people with even smaller lots, 75 feet wide and 100 feet deep, and they have this one-bedroom little thing behind their house, and they're renting it out. I guess it's, was pre-approved, you know, 30, 40, 50 years ago, and it does work out. I'm, I'm pro-housing, but I've also got to just make sure it's planned well, and, and that we don't incentivize putting ADUs in areas that maybe won't make sense. And I don't know what those areas are, just I hate to, one blanket approach. I'm not, I'm not against the ADU, but they need to be done carefully.
Thank you.
I think I'd be more, more in favor of splitting the lot and doing attached, single-family, also known as a duplex. Well, duplex is one property owner and two units. I'm saying it could also be two different owners as well. That might be a, a better approach to adding housing stock in the right areas.
Any other questions from council?
I do.
Go ahead, sir.
In the work that you've done for other municipalities, I'm wondering if, with a municipality, the geographic size of ours, when we talk about some of these things like ADUs or other regulations where an ordinance is required, obviously, that ordinance then applies to the entire 120 square miles. Have you been involved in any situations where, where the municipality can get segmented, so that certain things are allowable in certain areas and certain things are not?
That's some of the overlays, yeah. You can definitely control, you don't have to give blanket, you could say, "The Bimini Basin area is allowed to do this," or the Pine Island area, or, or Kismet, or whatever is allowed to do this. And those overlays can give you a lot of flexibility.
Okay, thank you.
The Seven Islands, when we did the Seven Islands Long Range Plan with the Northwest Neighborhood Association and council, and the consultant team we had for that, we actually created the MX-7, Mixed Use Seven Island Zoning District Overlay, just so that it had its own set of regulations. So if we, you know, as council member long discussed, the 318, we look at academic village, we look at some of these other bigger parcels that we have. If we want to go down the same path and bring in and work with the community and work, you know, see what they're, they're willing and what we all collectively need, we can create a zoning district just for that, that single area.
Well, the reason I brought it up was council member Shepherd's reference to ADUs, and certainly ADUs aren't the only, you know, issue that one would think, you know, instead of it being a total yes or a total no, it might be a where, rather than yes or no. And so as we think about planning, and we think about the, the magnitude of our geography, I think oftentimes, we, we need to start thinking more about where, rather than yes or no.
And, and the reason I ask that question is the financial demographic per household is different around the city, and different families have different needs.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we've actually, we've actually got household income data because of our work with the NPO. And you're right, that it varies quite a bit across the spectrum, from over 100,000 a year to under 20,000 a year. So, to your point.
Any other questions or comments from council? Staff have any comments? Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to, just to put some closing remarks on that. I mean, the, the point of this morning's presentation was to kind of set the stage for the rest of the presentations today and tomorrow. I mean, for me, the, the punchline is, and I think we, you know, we've all individually discussed this, is understanding that growth model, you know, we're, we're not in a maintenance mode. And so for the next, you know, 17 years, there is going to be increasing demands for parks and recreation, police 911 calls, EMS calls, schools, all that translates into trips to and from work, to and from the grocery store, transportation networks. And so with 75% of that growth through 2040, going to be going north of Pine Island Road, I want to have a small discussion, you know, that is going to translate into some stressors for us over the next five and 10-year planning horizon for, for resources. As all of that population goes to the north, and they start to want, you know, lower trip times, and, and they want widened roads, and they want beautified medians and sidewalks, they're going to start competing with, right now, for the most part, they're a silent crowd, right? They're, the south is, you know, where all the population base is, it's where we're focusing a lot of the resources, voting in sidewalks, road widens, medians. So just translating through what we saw this morning and the, that information, you're going to start to, you know, the north is going to start becoming alive, you know, as far as emailing and phone calls and complaints and requesting and demanding service levels and increases. And so it, it's going to be somewhat of a shift for us, you know, on the administrative side, as well as with, with council, in understanding that. And so as typically, we would look at where to put this, we're now need to start thinking about the North Cape, because if we don't now, that's going to translate into more and more complaints and demands in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation and the information. We look forward to hopefully hearing from you in the future as well. So thank you. Before I move on to the next item on the agenda, I think we'll take a 10-minute break. Come back at 10:35.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to have Financial Services Director Mark Mason present this.
Good morning, Mayor, Councilmembers. Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. As we've done over the past couple of years, we start this program off in January, kind of give you an idea of where we ended 2023 on an unaudited basis. It's preliminary. And then we'll kind of talk about what we forecasted for fiscal year 2025 and beyond, some expectations from the result of Hurricane Ian, and then we'll talk a little bit about our capital programming as well as debt, et cetera, and kind of end up with, you know, hopefully some council direction at the end. And if not, we'll talk about that at the end of tomorrow. So to begin with, just kind of give you an idea of where we are today with regard to fiscal year 2023. Overall, we're looking at a net change in fund balance of about $54,000 decrease. And the primary reason for that is, is the expenses that we've incurred associated with Hurricane Ian. I'm sorry? What did I say? What did I say, 54,000? Yeah. Okay, 54 million. My bad. I mean, it's just a little difference between, you know, thousands and millions. I'm sorry about that. Overall, that gives us an ending fund balance of about $75 million versus the $130 million that we ended in 2022. Again, the majority of this is associated with Hurricane Ian. It's the expenses that we incurred for debris cleanup. We do expect to receive most of this back during the course of the next year, next year and a half. The next page kind of reconciles out the 75 million net change in fund balance to get to where, for us, we also have commitments associated with Hurricane Ian that have carried over from the prior year associated with debris and some repairs that we have in the system. And in addition, we also have commitments or encumbrances that are also carried over from the prior year. So this all impacts the 23 fund balance and what we end up utilizing for fiscal year 2024 as a carryforward of those expenses. So as you recall, we have a strategic plan. I think everybody sees it when they read their budget on an annual basis. It's also something that we talk about and utilize in the preparation of the annual budget as well as forecasting for the future budget. And some of the things that, as a reminder, we have strategic priorities. Those are the items that are on the left that are in blue. And as I hit each page, we'll be talking about the strategic priorities. On the goals, those are the items that are at the top of the page. In this case, it would be Parks and Recreation. And then the items that are below, these are the waypoints. These are the items that are measurable, things that we can identify whether we've done them, whether we're in the process of doing them, or whether we're planning to do them in the future. And so I'm not going to go through each and every one of these. I just want to hit some of the, you know, the key points of where we are today. Clearly, our goal is and has and continues to be the completion of the projects associated with the GO bond. Again, these are in progress. We have several that are still being reviewed by both the Army Corps of Engineers and State of Florida. So we have a couple of those that have not passed through that particular process yet. We'll be bringing forward at least one of the projects here shortly. We have another larger one that we're reviewing for funding. And then we should be able to finish these up over the next year, year and a half. We also have, you know, we're looking at expanding access to the marine recreation opportunities, of course. We're looking at J.C. Park, one of the items that has been discussed extensively over the course of the past year. You had a briefing yesterday, I believe, on the Bimini Basin mooring field, and it's an item that will be coming for the City Council shortly. We're also looking at, and you'll hear from the Parks Director today, talking about the Parks Master Plan and the fact that we're going to need to do an additional, a new master plan in a couple of, couple of two years. I don't want to steal thunder, but it's one of the items that we will be talking about. Community beautification, one of the ideas, one of the things we have here is the acceleration of the median beautification. Streetscape projects, again, we'll be talking about that as one of the items that's on the agenda today to talk about. Community services, citywide needs assessment, that is in the programming stage to take a look at what we're talking about as far as the needs assessment. You heard a little bit about, you know, what we're forecasting as far as new population moving into the city in the future, new housing, et cetera, to kind of give you an idea of where we're going to be going with the needs assessment. Economy, education, and workforce, another strategic priority under the South Cape redevelopment. We've made several changes over the course of the last six months. Some of that information was discussed yesterday morning. Some of the small-scale events that we've done downtown, I'm not sure that you'd called the New Year's event a small-scale event, but it certainly was an event to be remembered. So, and I'm sure we'll be doing it every year from here on out. Visitor resident experience, some of the things we're talking about promoting our ecotourism. We're in the process of finishing up Yellow Fever Creek. I think that'll be at the top of the list of things we're going to be doing with regard to ecotourism. But we also have a number of other projects or a number of other facilities within the Cape that will certainly lend itself to the ecotourism attraction. We also have, as far as fiscal stability, some of the things that we're currently working on, long-term facility workspace. We've done the analysis, the various departments are looking at the results of that analysis, making any corrections, et cetera. Hopefully, we'll be done with that particular study, and we'll be back before the City Council to talk about the long-term facility workspace needs for the city. We're also in the process of designing for new fleet facilities, building facility, and we will be, and we are also looking at the property management facilities building and to co-locate in that particular area, but the North Cape Government Complex. Fire Station 12 is done, Fire Station 13 is in, should be done here soon. We are in the process of looking at the design for Fire Station 10, and of course, we'll be looking at Fire Station 5 thereafter. And of course, we're, as far as conceptual planning and permitting, et cetera, for the city, we just bought the two buildings over on Santa Barbara Boulevard. This will help in the space needs and the long-term facility workspace needs for the Infrastructure-wise, broadband, I think we're done with the broadband for the entire North Cape of the city, but at the same time, we have the city facilities for critical city facilities, and we're going into the third year of expanding the fiber optic. So all of our facilities are connected by fiber optic. As far as the Wi-Fi service at the city parks, as we connect out the fiber optic, we'll end up expanding the Wi-Fi into the parks and providing that free Wi-Fi service in those areas. Mobility-wise, we'll be talking about the transportation plan this morning and this afternoon, and of course, the mobility fees, potential mobility fees that will be a part of that. Northeast 24th Street, we've settled on the fact that we need to widen it, so we'll be in the process of designing that widening and constructing it within the next, as part of North One East, which means it'll be done over the next several years. Again, we're still in the process of installing sidewalks to meet the goal of having one mile of access via sidewalks to all public schools, and we'll work on the plan to extend it to two miles after that. Water and wastewater, again, we'll be talking a little bit about water and wastewater today after this, or probably after lunch. Some of the improvements that we're looking at as far as the UEP. Again, you listened to, you know, Dave's comments this morning that, you know, the majority of the growth is happening in the North Cape. I was here when the majority of the growth was happening in the Southwest Cape. So, you know, as you fill in one particular area, the growth needs to move to another. And now it's, the growth is moving into the North Cape as expected and as we've known for quite a long time. That has, you know, driven the need to put the water and sewer into the North Cape area. We're in the process of doing so on North One West. North One East will be, will be out for bids next year for North One East with the potential of starting North One East probably soon there, early 2026. Sorry, early 2025. And of course, we have the improvements in the, we just talked about facilitating or looking at utilities along Burnsthor Road and had just a recent discussion about Burnsthor Road. But we also have the Hudson Creek development that is looking to actually expand and putting in some of the utilities necessary to service their area. Environmental sustainability, another strategic priority for the city. We have a discussion today regarding the WEAR rehabilitation master plan. It has been completed. There will be a discussion about that today. We'll also have, on the tree canopy side, our horticulturist has done a bang-up job of getting a number of grants in here in order to expand the tree planting opportunities within the city. Environmental sustainability, the climate resiliency, we're going to be doing some applications for the CDBGDR funding associated with this for resiliency for the city. And on the land conservation side, we had, again, we talked about that briefly this morning. Not so much, you know, the land conservation is very important, but, you know, there will be more land that we will need to buy in order to be able to conserve it for the purposes that we've identified as far as potentially more ecotourism for land as well as looking at schools and things like that. And so for fiscal year 2024, you recently adopted the budget just a little over four months ago, and we're at one million, a little over $1 billion. I realize that we have a budget amendment that's on the agenda for next week that will increase that overall budget by about $50 million. So that'll take us a little over $1.1 billion. Whoops. Oh, man. You gotta be careful with the clicker. My wife tells me, she says, "Give it to me, I'll do it." So, to give you an idea of where we stand, you know, economics-wise for not only the city, but the region, et cetera, we're going to be pumping a lot of money into the region over the course of the next year with the CDBGDR money that we've received as well as the HMGP money that we've received. So over the next several years, we're going to be putting a lot of money from the state and from the federal government back into the community in order to create some resiliency as far as, you know, as a recovery from Hurricane Ian. With that said, we, you know, our current unemployment rate in this particular region and the MSA associated with Cape Coral and Fort Myers is 3.1%, and the overall unemployment rate statewide is around 3%. unemployment rate statewide is around 3 percent. We would expect that the unemployment rate would probably continue to stay low with the amount of work that will be pumped into the economy over the next three or four years. The Consumer Price Index at the, is right around 3.1 percent. The next two areas of inflation, we, Scrivener's error, we had 6.5 percent in there, should actually be 3.4 percent. That was the overall inflation rate for 2023. So we'll be working off of the the idea that the overall inflation rate will likely go down again over the course of the next year. Much will happen, much will reflect on whatever the Fed does as far as the Fed funds rate will will is concerned. At this point, you know, they've made the the commitment that they don't see that we're going to be increasing the interest rates anymore. But at the same time, the timing of when they made lower interest rates will really determine where we stand as far as inflation rate is concerned. Overall, with the inflation rate at 3.4 percent, we expect that the save our homes rate will be again at 3.3 percent for fiscal year 2025 as we develop the budget. We do recognize that there is a bill that's in the legislature right now to where they want to lower that particular rate. But, you know, that hasn't passed yet, hasn't been signed by the governor. So we're still working off the 3 percent scenario. New construction for the city, based upon the the information that has been provided to us from D S D, was about $1.2 billion. We're expecting what actually hits the tax rolls, as it has in the past years, will be higher than that, probably around $1.5 to $1.6 billion as far as new construction being added to the tax roll. Now, new construction really has more to do with the calculation of the rollback rate. But new construction also has to do with us evaluating what that value is against the tax rate that we have and how much additional services that we're going to need to be able to provide for the number of properties that came onboard. So in looking at the number of C O's that actually occurred that generated that $1.2 billion, was 4,266 C O's. Of that, 4,114 of them were single family residential properties. Then, and overall, 152 was commercial properties, which some of those were some of the multifamily properties that have also come online, as you've seen around the community. I'm talking about the rental properties, the large rental properties that that have come online. This will all necessitate, yes, sir?
Do you have the breakdown of the value versus single family and commercial?
I do. Single family came in at 1.1 billion and commercial came in at 71 million. So the, what ends up happening is, is these are the values that we have available. When somebody comes in and pulls a permit, they give us an estimated value. What actually goes on the tax rolls will be something completely different from that.
Mark?
Yes?
And these are not applied, these are C O's issued. So because there's other numbers that are involved with how many, how many dollars of projects have been applied for that would differ from these numbers?
Certificate of Occupancy is only solely on new construction. Now, there may be somebody who, you know, expanded a house or added an addition to it. We don't take those numbers into account when we're dealing with this because the numbers are actually much smaller and have very little impact associated with new construction. I'd be more concerned today about anything that may have been lost to the system. And again, we talked a little bit about that when we developed the budget last year and and brought it to the city council and discussed that fact that we actually saw negative growth last year as far as the, you know, the overall growth that we that that occurred. I think it was, we saw a $600 million reduction in growth last year as opposed to what we would have expected and closer to the 1.1, 1.2, 1.3 billion dollar increase. That was a direct result of Hurricane Ian.
Right. Yeah, but I guess the the point is, is that $1.2 billion, that's completed work?
Yes, completed work.
Not not applied for work that we should see come online in years to come?
Applied work, again, it's, it's, we look at this number to give us an idea that we're going to see a larger number when it actually comes out as a certified value in July.
Okay.
And so it gives us a number to, a working number to be able to work from, you know, about dealing with, if I've had this much activity in the system coming into the city, then we're going to need to provide this much more service. We're going to need to provide certain things that'll associated with, that's associated with that.
Okay. Thank you.
So in looking at some of the things that, you know, that are inflation related, I think housing, it being a, the largest contributor to headline CPI inflation, is still the largest contributor. And nothing has really changed with that. You know, the rental, the the cost of rental property has, is still very high. Although in Miami-Dade County, it has actually started to come down a little bit, you know, from its peak. It's still pretty high. And until, you know, it, the market is, it continues to drive that, but it's it's still a, it, it's kind of leveling out from what we could tell. It's stabilizing itself. And you can probably see a little bit of that when you're looking at it on this chart. It's probably squeezed itself down a little bit from the cost of housing, but the cost of housing is still up and it's still high. As far as contributors for core services, and that doesn't include housing, transportation still continues to be the the driver. But again, we're seeing it that it is actually stabilizing a little bit. How long that will last, you know, it's anybody's guess. I mean, it's, I'm more of a finance director than an economist, but, you know, I can certainly read the documents, kind of get an idea that there is a certain stabilizing influence that have occurred with the Fed's actions in increasing rates to, you know, further squeeze the economy down. So we're not seeing the cost of services continue to rise on a regular basis. As far as what that has to do with, you know, the, some of the things that we're, we'll be talking about in the future with wages and things like that, you know, wages is usually a catch up provision from, from looking at inflationary actions. It happens sometimes during, but it doesn't always keep up with. So it's usually a catch up provision that ends up happening after you see the inflationary actions. And it is something that we'll be talking about next week. So, kind of give you an idea, we've developed, when we developed the 2024 budget, we forecasted the 25, 26, 27, 28 budget. When we developed the 23 budget, we developed, you know, forecasts for 24, 25. So what we do is, we we look at very closely the next two years of the budget, but we're also forecasting at least the next two years after that. Kind of give us an idea of what we can see as far as the future is concerned. The the forecast model that I M G just showed you this morning will be, is really going to be something that we will use heavily going into the future. They haven't been very much wrong in their forecasts. As a matter of fact, they've been very right in their forecasts for the last 30 years. We used this formula, we used the I M G model when we were developing the budgets back in the mid 2000s. I don't really know how much they were used in, you know, during the, in the last 10 years. But having this updated model will give us a a great deal of comfort in what we think we're going to see in the future as far as new construction coming onboard and as far as new population coming into the city. The commercial side is usually a catch as cash can. It happens and it doesn't happen. We're in the, we're in a rising commercial environment right now because we're seeing a decrease in the overall residential construction. But residential construction has leveled itself out. It certainly appears that way. In talking with D S D, it, it, last couple of months, we had the, we had the spike at the end of December because a new building code went into effect. But we really believe that overall, things have settled down a little bit as far as new construction on residential is concerned. So when we developed the 25 summary for revenues and expenditures, that was based upon something we developed at least three years ago. We updated it slightly last year based upon some of the the information that was provided to us, especially forecasting out additional personnel that might be needed for the for the organization. However, we're also in the process of going through and making sure that, you know, the 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 funding that is necessary, that is necessary to support the operations of the, for the community is in place as we go forward. So when we, we're in the, we're in the process of doing the asset management programming right now, and that includes all capital replacements, et cetera. Departments are also in the process of developing and looking at their current annual budgets that they have available to them, and then adjusting for any rising costs that we may see going into the future. So essentially, this is what we're working from. This is our baseline. This is the, this is the start of the programming for what we'll bring forward to you as part of the, as part of July, August timeframe for the actual budget proposal. So, revenue, our revenue projections associated with the general fund, right now, we're forecasting out ad valorem at $140 million that supports the current forecasted budget. Of course, as we finish up doing what we're doing today and getting some guidance about what we're looking to do or add to the system, these numbers may change a little bit with regard to the final development of the budget. Overall, just as a reminder, we don't see the preliminary estimates for the valuation until June 1. We have certified values in July 1. At about that time is when we would be proposing the the millage rate for the city council's consideration. And as far as the state revenues estimates are concerned, we don't see those until, you know, between July and September. And this is primarily because the, you know, the new, the new budget for the state goes into effect on July 1. So we don't see those numbers until after they get that information and they've adopted and the governor has signed a budget into place. The total dollar value with both the state revenue estimates and the ad valorem, that represents 73 percent of the total general fund budget. So from a, although we're developing the expense side of things as we get, as as we're moving towards June, 73 percent of the revenue necessary to meet that, the the overall expense proposal, won't really be known until after June 1. Although we can certainly estimate what we think it'll be, that's, it really comes down to, it won't be absolutely known until we get to that As a reminder, as I just said, I think we're, we're looking at about $1.5 billion in new construction. That is a big help for us in understanding what we're going to need to add to the, add to the books as far as meeting that, the the new population that has has come into the system. Our revenue comparison standpoint from year over year, from our estimates of what we estimated over a year ago for fiscal year 25 compared to 24, which we adopted as little as three months ago. Overall, on the ad valorem side, we would look, be looking at a 6.24 percent increase. But again, that depends on decisions between, made between now and and May. We'll make a determination of whether it stays at that number or it goes up a little bit or it goes down. Overall, when you're looking at the public service tax, you know, we, if anybody hasn't looked at their electric bill yet, I looked at mine a couple of weeks ago, and the, the one line that was on there is no longer on there. And that's for the, the P F C calculation. So that's no longer there. So L C E C, as I think I briefed you all on about six, four months ago, they put in place a new structure for their kilowatt hour usage, and they zeroed out the, the public service, it's not the public service I'm trying, it's fuel cost adjustment, sorry, fuel cost adjustment. They zeroed out the fuel cost adjustment and put the numbers back into their rates. So they're starting out at zero on the fuel cost adjustment, and their rates are actually picking up the total cost today. So if you haven't looked, by all means, please look and you'll see what's, you know, what has changed. So we'll see what ends up happening in the future. But because of that, you know, it it basically, what went into effect in January, basically, you know, didn't really change the forecast much. So we, we ended up forecasting a little bit higher for 2025 and our, for 2024. And we're going to expect to see those numbers come down for 2025. Overall, for the state level, you know, we're running at about 2 percent, 3 percent. You know, there's still a lot of new construction happening in the state, but there are, there are increases in sales taxes, if not, have actually come down a little bit from what it has been in past years.
Mark, just a quick question?
Sure.
The numbers that we're looking at here with the general fund, are you estimating with the future value in mind at 1.5? Are you using the 1.2 with the C O's, with your?
I'm using, we ended up using, this, this percentage here does not include for 2025. We didn't know about the 1.2 when we developed fiscal year 2025. So we will be taking that into account. And, you know, and depending on what we see as changes associated with the proposed budget that we worked off of over the last couple of years, we would expect to see some proposed changes to the overall budget. So we will work out that, the 1.5 now that we understand that that's, you know, it takes all the way until the end of the year to figure out what that number really is. As I was, we were told, in talking with Matt last week, I think it was last week, he said that there was actually, we didn't, we didn't see the expected, just, if I don't say this right, Matt, just say something. But we did not expect, we did not see the expected increase in the number of new permits as a result of the new building code going into effect in December until the last week of December. We saw an increase of about 300 permits, which was somewhat surprising to me because I've seen what happens in the past when new building codes go into effect. And, you know, there's a rush of 1,000, 1,500 of these things getting dumped into the system because of the increased cost of whatever the new building code is. At the same time, there seems to have been a big rush on people coming in to C O their, their properties as well, which normally you see a wait until after December 31 to to actually C O their property. Because if you C O on December 31, it goes on the tax, tax rolls at whatever that C O'd value is, you know, and as part of the overall estimating that the property appraiser does. So we, we saw a shift of of things that I, I normally don't expect. I think we saw 466 C O's in December. So it's just some, one of those things that you don't normally expect to see it rise in C O's towards, towards the end of the year. So overall, for the general fund, we're balanced based upon our forecast for 25, 26, 27, and 28. We'll be working as the departments are working on, you know, their 25 budgets and evaluating 26, 27, 28. They'll also be working on their 29 budget. That's the fifth year. It's usually a long way out, but at the same time, you know, in order for us to be able to provide a five year forecast, we expect them to be working on the 29 as We wanted to kind of give you an idea of all funds and what we forecasted. This, this particular chart is included in the 25, I'm sorry, in the 24 budget document that you all saw. Again, when you're dealing with, you know, as far out as 27 and 28, it's a long time to be able to forecast something. We usually try to stick with the 25, 26 forecast. And it, we're a little more accurate in those particular areas. However, as things, you know, change, or, you know, as an example, as commercial has gone down, I mean, as residential has gone down and commercial has has gone up a little bit, it's actually driven the need to see a change in additional personnel in a different sector than we would have normally expected if we were just staying within the, in the, in the single family So this is all funds. And so on the asset management program, right now, the overall A M P is forecasted over the next, for 2025, is $595 million. The majority of this is in capital improvements. And again, the majority of it is actually in in utilities with the One East coming onboard in 2025. And I do believe that North Three was also included in there, but I think North Three is going to be a little bit further out than that. The facility maintenance, we have a lot of, a lot of catch up to do as far as facilities are concerned. And, and so some, Operation Sparkle is just one part of it. concerned, and so some, Operation Sparkle is just one part of it, you know, what we're trying to get accomplished in sprucing up all of our existing parks. Vehicle replacements is a normal trend that we do on an annual basis in what we, in what we're changing out fleet. The total AMP forecasted over the next several years, we expect to see a dip in the AMP in 2026, with again, another rise in 2027. That's the driver behind that is North 3. And then again, we'd see a dip in 2028, and in 2029, we would see another increase, and that would be North, whatever the next North is that we do after that. One of the things that is, is that we're going to be talking a little bit about that after this. So the AMP is in development right now. All departments were required to get their AMP information back to us by tomorrow. We'll develop information from that, and we'll be back at the June meeting, the June workshop, where we actually will talk about the AMP a little bit further and a little bit more in-depth, because there's going to be certain things that will come out of this meeting that will actually drive what we end up talking about in June. Again, we have certain items fire-wise, we have the Fire Station 10, we also have, looking at the Training Facility Phase 2. Training Facility Phase 2 will be, you know, from a timing standpoint, since we're paying for it with impact fees, you know, the, when we have the impact fees that are available in order to pay for it, then that's when we'll likely bring forward the Phase 2 portion of it. Unless it's absolutely, you know, vital and necessary, then we would end up issuing debt for it and then paying it back over a period of time with impact fees. Government services, again, we're back to, we're in the third year, going into the third year of a four-year program for the expansion of the city fiber and wireless in order to connect all of our facilities together and create the resiliency of communications between those facilities. Parks and Rec, right now, we have J.C. Shoreline in here. Again, as it continues to go through the development, the dollar value of that may change. This is just the initial estimate for J.C. Park. Public Works, we have a number of different things that are associated with Public Works, not least of which is the utility expansion project, and I realize that's not Public Works, it's utilities, but nevertheless, it is part of the programming. And you'll hear a little bit about the wear improvements that they have planned for, as well as bridges, which we have now have the master plan done for the bridges, so we'll talk about how we end up funding and forecasting out the repairs to the bridges. Utility-wise, again, we have the utility programming, utility expansion projects. We also have a number of other projects in the system, both which we'll be doing the design work for and doing the construction in future years. So I always think that this is the one thing that everybody always wants to talk about is the fund balance, so we can talk quickly about the fund balance for fiscal year 20, what we're expecting for 2024. So the same, basically the same format that I've used in the past, give you an idea. We start out with where we were last year from general fund balance as a whole, then we plug in the information about what we're expecting for the actuals. Again, this is un-audited, and in fact, between the time that we prepared this last week and today, it's actually changed by about $1.4 million. So overall, the estimated balance forward on adjustments is 56, closer to $57 million than it was when we prepared this at 54.9. So this gives you an estimate of your general fund adjusted balances that are being brought forward at $75 million, and then we kind of go through about what that means to, what we're going to end up publishing as far as the financial statements are concerned. We have a grouping of items that are included in the, in the fund balance that are non-spendable. These things, they're not cash-related and they're not spendable. So we have inventory. So this is a dollar value. We've gone out, we've bought things already, they've already been expended, they're sitting on our books as a, as an asset, and the offset to that is that because it's an asset, it's non-spendable for, for, for future services. At the same time, we have prepaid items on the exact same scale. We go out there, we buy things in advance, we prepay for them, and then we use them over a period of time, so they hit the books on a debit credit standpoint, but it's not cash that's available for future spending. Advanced funds, this is the advance for, to the CRA. CRA is paying it back over a 10-year period, so this dollar value actually goes down on an annual basis as the money comes in on an annual basis. So again, this is non-spendable because it's already been advanced to somebody else. On the committed fund balance, now we're in the, now we're into the potential cash that is available, because we have cash that's in the, in the fund, and so we have the budget stabilization reserve. Our, our financial policies call for the budget stabilization reserve to be funded at 2.7 months for fiscal year 2025. So with that said, in 2024, it's 2.6 months. Budget stabilization reserve was designed to stabilize the budget when certain events occur. The certain event did occur. It occurred in September of 2023. We went out, we spent about $60 million, or closer to $70 million for debris cleanup, and of that $70 million, we've received back about $24 million in advance payments, not only debris, but also the cost of personnel associated with responding to the hurricane, as well as other, other costs that occurred as a result of Hurricane Ian. And so those funds, and I'll go back to a comment that Councilmember Hayden had made back into October, November timeframe, he says, well, how much of the reserves have been used? At the time, we didn't know what the overall cost was going to be, but now I can tell you that the overall, the cost of the reserves that have been used is about $54 million. And so we bought down the $8 million that we set aside, and we will replenish that as we get the reimbursements back from FEMA, and at the same time, we'll be replenishing the budget stabilization reserve as these funds come back in from FEMA. So overall, you see the budget stabilization reserve is down now to $27.5 million, because we used a good chunk of it associated with responding to Hurricane Ian. Associated with the disaster reserve is $8 million. Now it's zero because we've used it, and so it's no longer available for something. However, we still have a reasonable amount of the budget stabilization reserves in case something does occur this year, but we, at the same time, we expect that we're going to be receiving some reimbursements back from FEMA over the next six months. The sale proceeds surplus property that stays there, you haven't identified what you want to do with it yet, so we're, nor we recommended that you do anything with it yet. At the same time, FEMA reimbursements for the, that we earmarked for the GEO bond and COVID reimbursements from previous year, that's about $12.8 million. We intend on bringing that forward and using a portion of those funds during the course of this fiscal year, so we expect to be able to utilize those. If not this year, it'll be for next year. Which leaves us down into the less assigned fund balance. We have items that are associated with the, with grants that, you know, we, these are our matches, or this is the amount that we need to set aside in order to pay for these grants. And so that takes us down to an overall unassigned fund balance today of zero. And that's what you'll actually see in the financial statements today, is it's going, you're going to see an unassigned fund balance of zero, because it's really, you know, based upon our current policies that City Council has adopted, there's nothing that's available for future expenses until those funds come back in during the course of this year. And again, if you go back and you, and replenish the budget stabilization reserve first, and you replenish the disaster reserve, $8 million, then you will, over time, have additional funding, which you'll see here in a minute, that will be available to you in the future, if we expect to see something come back, or we don't expend all the funds that we budget for on an annual basis. And so that takes us into the next slide. I know this is a little bit small. I wish it could be a little bit bigger up here. But when you're looking on a five-year basis, so one of the things is, we wanted to give you an idea of a forecasted general fund, fund balance for the next five years. This is not gospel, this only, we estimated, we just split the amount that we expect to receive back from FEMA, you know, between two years from '24 and '25. Some of this, it could be skewed a higher number in the future, or it could be a higher number in the current year. We also show that we're utilizing the funds for the GEO parks in 2025. Again, depending on what we bring forward as far as the financing for Festival Park or any of the other parks that we haven't received permits for, we may end up using these funds earlier than that programming. And so that brings us down to, at some point, by the end of 2024, we would expect to see, as we bring these funds back in, these numbers will end up changing, we end up putting funds back into the disaster reserve, as well as the budget stabilization reserve, so the numbers will change in the future, about what that means as far as the funds that are available for future improvements in the city. That would be the unassigned fund balance. Okay, so, any questions on that? I know it was a big chart, and there's a lot of information there, so. All right, so on the existing debt, we're forecasting our existing debt in 2025, which is a combination of general governmental debt as well as enterprise debt, a total of about $53, $54 million. We just sold the bonds for the assessments, which will be paid from the assessments. We also sold water and sewer bonds that will pay for the transmission portion of the, or the non-assessed portion of the, of the utilities that is being put into North One West. We'll be doing this again for North One East later on in this fiscal year, and again, when we start doing any of the future UAPs, we'll be looking at the exact same thing. We have not yet, because we don't have a final price as far as the, as far as the financing for the fleet facility is concerned, nor do we have a final pricing for the facilities, property management facility up in the North Cape government complex, but we do forecast the dollar value associated with them, as well as the potential debt service, which is on the next page. And so from a governmental debt standpoint, again, you don't see the yacht club included in here, because we don't have a final value on what the yacht club is going to be. We originally did a presentation on that about three years ago, two years ago now, two and a half years ago, talked about $60 million project. I don't know what it's going to be yet, and so when we get to a final design, then we'll ask them for a final GMP based upon the information that's available to us and move on from there. The enterprise debt, we're expecting that, we have a number of projects. We have the US-1 Companions that's on here, depending on land or the reservoir, will depend on what we, there may be a little bit more associated with the reservoir. We also have a number of other items that are here. We have the neighborhood water line, where I think we're working through applying SRF funding for doing that work, so that will be a part of enterprise debt in the future. We also have a number of other projects, the RO, the North RO well rehab, as well as the North RO expansion, that will also be included in, in future debt.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
With regard to the reservoir, is the grant that we've, that we've just accepted, if you will, the $5 million, additional $5 million grant, has that been considered in these numbers?
Yes.
Or will these numbers be updated with that?
The $5 million has been considered into it. But at the same time, as, you know, with each delay and each year's delay, you know, and actually doing the construction, we may end up eating up that $5 million in construction cost. So, but we do take that into account when we know the grants are available to us. And so the, at this point, we have, you know, we're looking at the property management facilities building, we're estimating it at about $15 million, so we'll be, we'll be putting that as part of the AMP, and of course, the yacht club right now is on to be determined. Some of these things we'll end up talking about again in June. The one thing I want to be able to do is come back either at the June workshop or sometime in between to kind of talk to you all about debt capacity and debt capacity for the city of Cape Coral, and what that means and how it's calculated. There's, just to kind of give you an idea of what we have available to us, you know, as far as paying back debt in the future and how that's calculated. Also, we have a few bills that are before the state legislature right now, and what that impact to us may or may not be if they're passed. Right now, all the numbers that we're dealing with here were numbers that were based upon what the value was that we have available to us. So at the end of October, I mean, at the end of September last year, the overall value, taxable value for the city of Cape Coral is right around $26 billion. So everything that we've calculated here is based upon those numbers, because we don't know what the future number is going to be. And so there's a desire to increase the homestead property tax exemption from $50,000 to $75,000. So what that would mean is that as part of the first $100,000 of value, the first homestead exemption is on the first $25,000, then you skip $25,000, and then you go to the third $25,000, is where the other $25,000 exemption is at. And then, of course, now they want to do the fourth, or the fourth quarter $25,000 exemption. So that would mean that the first $25,000 is exempt, then you, the second $25,000 is taxable, a third would be exempt, and is exempt, and then the fourth is what they're proposing to be exempt. So anybody with a value of less than $100,000, they'd only be paying taxes on the $25,000. Anything that's below 50, it's some numbers between 25 and 50, and anything less, from a taxable value standpoint, of less than $25,000, it's zero. And so from a taxable value standpoint, it'd be zero taxes. The, what we're looking at as far as what that means to us on the general, on the general fund, or the general millage rate, it would mean about an $8 million gross reduction, and, or about .2965 mils. For the debt service side of it, it would be a gross reduction of about $243,000, or about .0092 mils. The, for, at the same time, they're, they're also looking at indexing the homestead exemptions to an inflation rate, or whatever the CPI is, and I think it's the southeastern CPI that they're looking at. So we calculated that into, into account as if all of this was in place. And if they indexed the homestead exemption, we would be looking at a $1.1 million gross reduction. Of course, whatever that, that overall CPI is, would indicate what those numbers would actually be in the future. So these aren't fixed, these are not static numbers, this is just as if this had been in place. For the, as far as the millage rate or the amount necessary for the debt service, it would have been, let's see, so 1.1 million gross reduction, .42 mils based upon the $50,000, or 1.6 million if it's up, if it increased to the $75,000. We didn't even look at the, on the, on the debt service millage, because I think it's very, very small. And then there's a bill out there to remove or repeal Chapter 205, which relates to the local business taxes, or the, yes, it's the local business tax. For us right now, we're looking at a potential loss of about $650,000. That's what we budget for. Just as a reminder, the local business taxes are what's used to actually, right now, finance the incentive program that the City Council put in place a couple of years ago. It also finances the entire economic development program and the economic development staff. So right now, that's what the overall hit would be for if these, these items are passed. And so as far as wrap-up is concerned, right now, our overall inflation is at 3.4%. We're forecasting that this number will come down in the future. If, if the Fed has its way, it's going to be in the 2% range, so that's something that we should be working off of in a forecasting capacity into the future. Interest rate volatility, interest rates are coming down a little bit. It's not a rapid decrease, they are coming down slightly. What we are looking at from a return on investment standpoint, as little as four months ago, has lost now probably about 40 basis points. So, you know, what does that mean to us, you know? It's, you know, we're still earning some really good money, but if I have to go out and issue debt, the, the, the rates that we're going to pay are not going to be significantly different than what we just put in place, but probably maybe about 30 to 50 basis points tops on a tax exempt basis. Budget impacts, rising labor costs, that is something that we need to be cognizant of as well as increased operating and capital cost. Nothing has changed in the vehicle arena. It's still taking an extremely long time to build vehicles and, and get them back into the system. I do believe we're still at two and a half, two and a half years just for a, a fire vehicle or a fire apparatus, one of the larger ones. And so it, this also impacts any of the larger vehicles we would be looking at as far as utilities is concerned, back trucks, things like that, and on stormwater. So that's just on the larger vehicles. On the smaller ones, on, on cars, things like that, look, the, you know, the strike had an impact to us, but, you know, the, we still have to be nimble enough to actually order vehicles towards the end of the fiscal year to, to ensure that we have the capability to receive them in the following fiscal year. Of course, we have the legislative impacts and the ones that are out there right now are the, the legislative session hasn't even started yet. So there may be more that may impact us as the, as the legislative session goes on. These will have impacts on the revenues. They will also have, you know, we also have the inflation impact of expenses. Fund balance wise, we do have plans for the future. We have the strategic plan focus. The, we're, we're in the third year of the strategic plan. I, I would expect that, you know, within the next year, we'll probably be looking at updating the strategic plan and realigning the, our focus on the, on the strategic goals that we have in place and coming up with new projects that will help us achieve those goals. And then, of course, we, master plans, you're going to hear a lot about master plans over the next, over the remainder of today and tomorrow. And some of the things that we have identified, but they are not yet included in the budget as the budget is proposed today. That's some of the things that we'll end up talking about. And so as we've done in the past, we've, we've looked for guidance. I, to be perfectly frank, you haven't heard everything that you're going to hear for the remainder of today as well as tomorrow. So I think it probably would be best if we kind of came back to this after the fact and, and kind of got some guidance from you at the end of the process as opposed to, as opposed to right now, if, if that's okay with you all. Okay. That's it. That's it for me.
Okay. I'll open it up and I agree, you know, that last slide that you presented to us, that's probably a question for the end of the day tomorrow, you know, once we hear all the, all the information. And I think that'll only be a starting point because, you know, just adding up some of the unknowns at the Florida Legislative this year, I mean, we could lose about $10 million if we, if all of that was passed. You know, so there's a lot of unknowns here still. But I think tomorrow, at the end of the meeting or the end of this budget review cycle, that we can have that discussion as a council. Council members, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Mark, I just wanted to try to bring some relevance to a couple of the numbers that came through and just, and just ask an indulgence if I could. One is in, in a lot of the information and data that you shared with us, involved in that was some surplus numbers. And the, the surplus numbers were in a couple of different areas, 22 million, $26 million. For, for those that are listening and watching at home, to, to kind of bring that into perspective, you know, we've all been told, you know, hey, don't spend everything you make. You need to have a buffer, you know, whatever. So those, those buffers are never really predictable. And, and so with our, with our population, those surpluses represent $100 to $120 per person. As we're, as we're trying to manage this, this billion dollar budget, to, to look to have a slush fund, if you will, if we end up with a surplus, that's a good thing. But although certainly citizens and no one in this room likes to fund surpluses, you know, consciously funding surpluses because that just simply increases taxes. So with one of the pieces, the indulgence that I'm asking is that with one of the pieces being that new construction expectation of revenue, you know, one of the things that's happened over the last couple of years is an extreme increase in building materials. And then, of course, that's rolled into what the dwelling or the commercial building costs and then what it's valued at and what it, what it's taxed at. And so I would just ask that as, as we look at those numbers, that we, you know, certainly take a look at the, the permit values that have been submitted and, and what to expect from those permits that have not, you know, CO'd yet, but that will CO in the future. And when the value of those properties come online, the potential for increased revenue that would, that would be there, that wouldn't bump that surplus, you know, an unexpected amount that, that we're funding surpluses more than we, more than, that we should from the standpoint of just safely planning so that there is some surplus so that we end up not going into a deficit. That, I just wanted to make that point in that, in that request.
I appreciate that. The, the interesting part is, is that if the, if we'd not had the budget stabilization reserve, we would have been out into the marketplace borrowing money in order to respond to Hurricane Ian. Interest is not reimbursable back by FEMA. And so, you know, there, there would have been a cost to us that would have never been recovered. So it, it's, you know, the foresight of the city council to create the reserve, have the sufficient reserve set aside, and the fact that I don't know that anybody would have ever expected to have to spend that value in order to clean up a city, it, it was a phenomenal number. But the fact that we had the reserves, the fact that the FEMA had a mechanism in place that provided us some reimbursement or 50% amount of the money upfront was a very big help. Now, in looking at the, the forecasted numbers, that, having been, having done this for a long time, a permit might be issued in January. The actual construction might not occur or be finished for 18 months. So when they came in to pull the permit, the value that was estimated was the value that was estimated at that time. That estimated value carries all the way to the CO. So that's the value that, you know, when they're, when, when we're looking at the CO dollar value, then, and we get this information from, from DSD, we're looking at whatever that initial estimate was. That's the reason why there is always such a larger change about what actually goes on the actual books because the property appraiser will look at the, the appraisal of the surrounding area of the, of the property that's going in and going, okay, well, you know, they undervalued this, so we're going to put it on the books at this dollar value. And when the, when you have a shortened timeframe for construction and you don't have the, you know, the issues that we've had here with the number of permits that have been out there and the, and the, the supply chain issues, it, it, sometimes it's just a little bit closer and I don't have this, this much of a drag on the, on what the CO value is and what the estimate is. But for us, we estimate the, you know, basically, we estimate our surplus or our budget stabilization reserve on two months of our operating expenses or two and a half months, 2.7 months now of our operating expenses. So if we're operating expenses $100 million, then we would expect that, you know, it's going to be $27 million.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council?
Mr. Mayor, if I could really quickly, Mark, and I know now's not the time to get into the weeds on this, I guess, is everybody able to hear me? But I've, I've spoken on this in the past and I would like at some point in the future, maybe during one of the, these next sessions to dive into the, the fiber component as far as the under, the fiber optic cable that we've dedicated funding to for the next several years.
Sure.
We don't need to do it now, but I know last year in the 24 budget, we allocated 6.6 million and then I see in that same budget, we forecasted from 25 to 29, 27 million roughly. So if we could just get an overview as far as the value of the utility of that project, where we're at in that project and the usefulness, I guess, for lack of a better term, moving forward, I'd appreciate that.
Sure. Okay.
Any other comments or questions? First, thank you, you know, for the overview. I think it's a great starting point for us moving forward. So we have some up-to-date data and I'm sure, you know, this budget cycle is just starting. So it'll give us some great information to reflect back on when we're making some decisions here later on as we go through this process. So thank you. Any, any questions from staff at all? Mr. City Manager?
Well, it looks like we're about 15 minutes early for recess. So if, if you don't want to have an open discussion on anything this morning, we can take a few extra minutes for recess.
And what time would you like to reconvene?
We had an hour scheduled for lunch, so it was 1 o'clock.
Okay. All right. Then any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we will break until 1 PM. Item 5C, Utilities Master Plan, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to have the Utilities Director, Jeff Pearson, give this presentation.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Jeff Pearson, Utilities Director. This afternoon, we're going to talk briefly about the Utilities Master Plan. And then it will be followed with another presentation by Jeff Dykstra with StanTech regarding our recent impact fee study. The current map that was included in the 2022 Master Plan and was adopted by City Council is shown here. As you can see, we're, the blue area is the North One area. That area is what we're currently constructing, the North One West area. It was actually split into two projects. The area after North One would be North Three and Four, Five and Six, and so on through North Twelve in 2045. That's the current plan, but as we all know, master plans are somewhat of a living, breathing document that are subject to change and we'll talk about some of those things. First of all, I would like to show you with our wastewater system, the way it's set up currently in our current Utilities Master Plan is the dark blue areas, which is North Three and Four are going, that flow is going to be going down to the Southwest Water Reclamation Facility. North Five, the light blue area, would also go to the Southwest Water Rec Facility until the North Water Rec Facility would be online in 2035, according to the current plan. The North One area is actually, the flows are split between the Everest Water Rec Facility and the Southwest Facility. And eventually, once the North Water Rec Facility is constructed, those flows would go to the new facility. So that's important and I'll talk about that more coming in, in the coming slides. Our current budget improvements, capital improvements through 2027 are a little over $1 billion. In the yellow box where it says assessed costs, those costs are for distribution lines. Those are, that's what basically is in the assessment that the homes and businesses pay within the UEP projects. The non-assessed costs are the costs that are funded by the water and sewer system, stormwater system and gas taxes for the improvement of the roads, the stormwater infrastructure and the larger infrastructure associated with the UEPs, such as the, the larger transmission, the lift stations, canal pump stations, tanks and whatnot. The orange area in that top box is funded by others. Basically, that would be line extensions like Hudson Creek is, has entered into an agreement to install water and sewer up Burnt Store Road. And then the Water and Sewer CIP is everything else that my department does to keep the system running and continue to meet growth. Here's just a quick summary of improvements through 2040. Just like to point out that the North RO plant will need to be expanded up to 21 million gallons a day. It's currently permitted at 12 million gallons a day, so that's almost double the capacity that it currently has. Also, we will be constructing the new Water Rec Facility up next to the North RO plant. That's going to be a big project. And we have some other various reuse tanks, pump stations, irrigation canal pump station improvements as well, including some improvements to the North-South Transfer Station and potentially aquifer storage and recovery wells that could also be expanded to store water. Here's an overall cost summary for the Utilities Master Plan. Right now, in today's dollars, we're looking at about $4.8 to $9 billion. So it's very expensive and I'm sure that number will continue to grow over time. And also I want to point out, these are just planning level cost estimates. Now I want to talk about the South Florida Water Management District's water shortage order that they recently imposed over the past couple of months. There is a USGS well. It's well 4820. It's on the corner of Andalusia and Diplomat. And that well has gotten very low in the area. The triangle is just kind of a basic location where that well is located. And as you can see, this is important, that the North One area that's currently under construction, three-fourths of the area, if you drew circles around that well... under construction, three-fourths of the area, if you drew circles around that well, are in the North One area. So as soon as those, um, homes and businesses located in that utility extension area come online, we should start seeing the well, um, start to recover. However, the South Florida Water Management District, you can see North Six there, just right next to it. This other 25%, if you will, um, is currently projected to 2035. Here's just a graph that the Water Management District provided. As you can see, back in 2007, we, I re, I was at Charlotte County, actually, when this happened, and, uh, we had a really bad drought. It dropped way down, and then it, it recovered, uh, and has been going up and down. The high points are, um, during the rainy season, where we'll recover. And this red line here is the minimum flow level, or, I'm sorry, minimum developable limit. So in other words, when you reach this level right here, um, you've reached the maximum that can't, you know, there, you can't really, not supposed to drill anymore wells because you're, you're reaching the maximum developable limit. This red line is the top of the aquifer, which is the minimum flow level, and you don't want to ever reach that level, which is at negative 100 feet, NGVD 29, which is basically, NGVD is basically, uh, zero would be like sea level. So that's 100 feet below, uh, sea level. You don't ever want to reach that, uh, that, that level. So some of the discussion items we would like to discuss with Council today and get your input is that the, as we, as I pointed out in an earlier slide, the UEP North Six is the area that would trigger the North Water Reclamation Facility to come online. And so we're already looking at that now, and, uh, we're looking to, um, move that project forward. Um, the project will take at least four to five years to complete at an estimated cost of 250 million. And we can reorder the UEP, but the plan is dependent on the North Water Rec Facility, uh, completion. Otherwise, and you may ask why, it's because we would have to put in temporary force mains, very expensive temporary force mains, uh, you know, in the 10 to 20 million or more range to hop over, uh, other areas. And then, once the North Facility came online, we basically wouldn't need those mains, so they would basically be a throwaway main. So, which no one wants to spend that kind of money, that kind of investment, and knowing that you're not going to have to use it in 10 or 20 years. Um, also, uh, after the current North One UEP is complete, uh, the UEP North Three design is scheduled next and could be constructed if we started now on the North Water Rec Facility. So also, the Water Management District has urged us to accelerate that North Six area to help with the situation with the wells. Um, so based on that, uh, city staff recommend that the UEP North Six be accelerated next and, uh, time that concurrently with the North, new North Water Reclamation Facility next to the North RO plant. Some of the issues that we need to consider by accelerating the UEP schedule is that, as we know, currently, we're not on track with completing the UEP North One, uh, by 2024. Uh, and that's mainly due to COVID-19. The project was split into two areas, smaller areas, uh, North One East, North One West, and due to supply chain issues and other issues. Uh, also, contractor availability could lead to higher costs due to the lack of qualified contractors and market demand. Uh, non-local contractors, if we, if we were to accelerate it at a very fast pace, we're going to get a lot of contractors from outside our area, potentially outside of our state. And every dollar that we spend on infrastructure returns about $7 back to our local economy. So how we've done the UEPs in the past is we broke them up into multiple contracts. So the smaller contractors, the more local contractors would have the bonding capacity to be able to take on a smaller bite, if you will, of a larger project, rather than having one giant firm come in and do the whole thing. Uh, we have multiple contractors, most of which are local, that keep the money local here in, uh, Cape Coral and in Lee County. So, uh, it's been a good program. Also, it could lead to increased customer utility rates. It can also increase our impact fees. And I'd like to mention that the last sta, study that, uh, was in rate approval, it wasn't the last study, but it was the last rate approval, was 2004. So our current impact fees have been at 67.50 for a very long time. And if we would have adjusted that based on the CPI, the rates could have been as high as $11,000. For, that's based on like a single-family home with, uh, central sewer, central water, and irrigation. Uh, we will be coming forward on a future COW on the water shortage area impacts, uh, that the district has declared. Uh, but with all the rain that we recently received, hopefully, um, that chart that I showed you a little while ago, um, will show a positive uptick in the aquifer. And that's all I have. And it, I'll open it up for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, just one quick question before I open it up to, uh, Council. Uh, as far as the water shortage area that, uh, South Water Management District had outlined there, is it a possibility that, uh, they could impose a moratorium in that area if that well, uh, got substantially low, below their standards?
Yes, Mayor. Um, like I was saying on this chart here, um, once you cross over that bottom line, this one here, and I've seen some recent models, uh, we meet about every other week with the Water Management District on Fridays, they actually have a trend line showing it dropping below the MFL, which we don't want to do. And so, um, if it did that, they would absolutely, would not allow any more wells.
Right. I knew that answer, but I just wanted to make sure, number one, my colleagues knew that, and number two, uh, the public knew that, that was tuning in as well, because, uh, that possibility does exist, uh, which could even be more of an impact, uh, you know, to our community. So with that, I will open up for any Council discussion. Councilmember Cosby?
Thank you. Uh, Jeff, on that model, when does it show it going below the line?
Um, probably in the next year, but of course, it's just a model, and...
Are you talking about the second line, right?
Yeah, this line here.
Okay.
Which is the, ba, basically, the MFL is the top of the aquifer that they don't want you to ever go, because what can happen is, the ground can compact, and it basically destroys the aquifer.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. So in relation to that, then, when, um, I believe you kind of touched on it, when do we expect to turn the faucet on, uh, to North One to alleviate some of those issues?
Uh, I believe the schedule right now is early, uh, 2025 to late 2024. Of course, we, we have to give them six months, once it's available, so they have six months after that to, uh, to actually connect. So we're probably realistically looking at mid to late 2025 before they're actually connected, and we start seeing this trend line improving. But this is also tied to the droughts. And that's a perfect example, back in 2007, when we had the bad drought, that that also impacts this as well, not just private wells.
So then, you know, we're being asked basically to make a difficult decision forecasting years ahead, to change the dynamics potentially of the UEP, uh, organization or structure, without knowing realistically whether it will be necessary to the extent that it's being pervaded now as far as the drought. It may, this may resolve some of the issues, but we don't know that, and we can't wait to find out.
Correct.
Um, so ju, so then again, just to kind of make sure we're not burying the lead, what you're asking us to do here is to potentially swap North One with North Six on that schedule?
No.
What are we trying to, can we get, can we pull the?
It's the...
I'm sorry.
Let me try and wrap up a couple, because there's a couple of key points in here that...
North Three, I'm sorry.
So that the, let's stay on this topic first, then I'll jump to the other one. So there's a, there's really two major points here. One is, so by rule, when the Water Management District gets to the, the MDL, which is the red, the bottom line, I'm sorry, MFL, by rule, that's when basically a moratorium kicks in. By rule, when they hit the purple line is when they have to initiate a water shortage order. So we've met with them, and so we intend on coming back at a COW meeting of task, uh, utility staff and development services staff to come up with a list of ideas and projects and rules and incentives that, for you all to consider, that may help bend that curve a little, little less steep to try and push this out a couple more years. Because if you just put a trend line on that chart, about 2028, they're going to be at moratorium level, considering no other drought, which would make it worse, or an increase in development in that north area. So then that, that pushes us, in, in order to get si, uh, Six online, that pushes us to require us to have the North Water Reclamation Facility. That in itself requires, is gets paid for by impact fees. And so if you go to, go to the, the cost summary chart, Jeff?
Okay.
Okay. So that first column, the UEP assess, that's what the residents pay for basically the distribution lines in front of their house, the purple, the green, and, and the blue line. The second column, the non-assessed, that's basically your, you know, your transportation costs that are involved with road widening, stormwater, uh, improvements, gas tax improvements. And then the funded by others are, are improvements that are made by, you know, developments or, you know, other governments that are going to be part of the program, but they're not passed on to the residents. And then the Water and Sewer CIP, uh, go back to the green chart, the green one. I'm going through the columns. So then that, that column that's one, two, three, four, fifth from the right to, from the left, that says Water and Sewer CIP, those are your impact fee paid improvements. That's your treatment, plants, water and wastewater, and your transmission lines, and then your big pump houses. If you look at the, the total amount of funds that are needed in today's dollars, you're looking at 1.2 billion dollars. So the message here, if you take the 67,000 additional housing units from this morning, so we're at, if you remember from Dave's presentation, we're at 100,000 residential units. If you add the other 67,000 that need to come in the next 15 to 20 years to get to the full build-out of residential, that only brings in 453 million dollars. And then if you assume there's another 200 million in commercial impact fees, that only brings in 653 million. So you see, we're, we're about six hun, at the current 20-year-old impact fee rate, the message here is if we don't adjust them, growth will not be paying for growth, and existing rate payers will end up having to raise rates to make, to cover the cost of that column. And I, and I don't think that's a message that we want to send. So we need to be, we need, message two is, coming off of having to bring that North plant online because of the water shortage, and just growth that's coming, we need all of those improvements in order to make this system function, but our current impact fee rate is not sufficient to generate the revenue to have growth pay for growth. Thank you.
I appreciate the clarification. There's, there's a lot of messaging here, right? There's, there's several components to the presentation, uh, which I appreciate. But I guess my, my particular concern, uh, or inquiry, I guess, um, was tailored to the, the issue, the mentioning that we reorder the UEP, and so we're talking about prioritizing Six. And so my question was, at the expense of which one?
Just fast-tracking it. We, we would still leave North, finish North One East, start constructing North Three, but then fast-tracking and adding Six into the program as a, as a, as an additional one. And so that, that's why we went over, look, there's some...
In addition to the North Water Rec Facility? That's my question. We can't do all of them.
Oh, um, I didn't see.
I think that's what you have. Which one are we not going to do first?
Correct.
Oh, re, the reorder, reorder.
We would reorder the Six being...
Okay, that's my question, because I know third is, or North Three is coming up also, but then my question then would have been, there's also other considerations with regards to DEP and, and those factors relating to the, the waterways that apply. So, all right, thank you.
Sorry, I, I didn't...
That's okay.
I was saying fast-tracking, I was meaning what you were saying, but not, not understanding what you were saying. So North Four would not actually be next in the numerical, it would, it's numerically correct, but not in order of construction.
Correct. Thank you.
Yeah, kind of like what we did with North Two, we did Two before we did One, because this area is more, uh, environmentally sensitive.
That was mine.
So it just made, uh, more sense to do that first and then jump back and go to North One. Uh, but also, I'd like to point out, this is another USGS well, this other yellow triangle, and it's right above North Four. It's in good shape. The aquifer is, is in a lot better shape than this one. So we've got a little more time for that one, but we're running out of time over here.
Jeff, would, um, if we fast-tracked and we put the, uh, new plant up, up quicker, would that negate the need for Three to go south? Would Three then be able to go into the North Plant? Like, wasn't Three-One that was going to have to go south?
Your initial chart showed that it was north, south.
Yeah, the blue, the dark blue and light blue pieces?
Fair.
Yeah, so would that, would that, would that now mean North Three construction and the, the mains go to the new North Plant, or it is still have to go to the South Plant?
We're going to design it to where it can go either, either...
But we talked about not throwing away pipe and money. I mean, can we, I mean, would we be able to be definitive in that response, where...
Well, it's mainly the, the North Six one that is an issue, uh, with having to do a throwaway.
Right, but that's under the current...
We were going, we actually have, we had a force main going down Veterans to handle North Three. Um, we just ran the hydraulic analysis, and if we go ahead and build the North Water Rec Facility and send those flows, um, they, actually, the North Three down to Southwest, we're going to be okay. Um, but we want to have the flexibility in the future that, without building another force main that's going to cost like 40 million dollars, uh, we don't need that main now. If we go ahead and do the North Water Rec Facility, send it down the existing mains that we have now, tie them in, we won't need to have a, a throwaway main that we thought we were going to need for North Three. So actually, that's really good ne, news, because that main could cost as much as 50 million dollars. Down Veterans, that won't be needed.
Plus, even though we're, we're estimating five years, we want North Three done.
Right.
Before, right.
And we got time, because there's no way we can accelerate a plant that quickly from scratch. You know, the shortest time would be four years. Uh, usually, plants can take five years or more...
Uh, usually plants can take five years or more to, uh, construct. Plus you have to construct the off-site force mains, uh, coming from the plant to get to where, uh, the customers are. So that's, that's another cost as well and time.
Councilmember Shepard.
Are we working on, I'm sorry, it's a little question's different. Um, are we working on any engineering ideas for our drainage system to increase percolation in our city? For instance, we just had this heavy downpour of, you know, eight to 10 inches of water and we know the majority of it just went into the river and in the gulf. Um, is there ways that we could, uh, re-engineer our drainage system? Um, and maybe future catch, catch basins at commercial sites and there being more of like French drains? Or, or is there any ideas on how we can capture more of this rainwater and, and increase percolation?
There's certainly technologies, uh, in the industry to, uh, help with percolation. Um, I do know over time as the city becomes more, um, impervious, if you will, because of the roads, the houses, all of that, that will generate additional runoff over time into the canal system. So, but there are, I know that the UEP now does wee poles, uh, in some of the catch basins, so the water will percolate. Uh, that wasn't the case in the past with some of the older areas and systems that are in place now. Uh, but certainly there are technologies and yes, the answer is yes, it can be engineered, uh, but it's not going to be, uh, inexpensive to do so.
Thank you.
Especially areas that are already established.
If there's any information that you can give council on any engineering ideas that maybe we can slowly implement over time, at least forward it.
Will do.
We'll go to Councilmember Steinkie and then Councilmember Hayden.
Thank you. Jeff, um, could you give us a quick update on the status and timeline on the North Reservoir and how that might impact, uh, this discussion?
Absolutely. Uh, we are at 100% engineering design. Um, we need a permit with Florida Department of Transportation, FDOT. Um, we have the permit already submitted. They have communicated to us that they want to have a long-term lease or we own the property such as Fee Simple. Um, we are currently waiting for information from the owner of the reservoir's attorney. And once we have that, we already have selected a third-party appraiser. They have an appraisal. It's high. We think it's high. We have two appraisals we believe are more realistic. Um, there was, we believe there was a mistake by their appraiser and so we're trying to, um, work through that. And then we're going to get back together and hopefully, uh, negotiate an agreement to be, that would be brought to council for your consideration. Once that's done, then we're probably looking at, we'll, we'll get our permit very rapidly from the Florida Department of Transportation. As you know, we've got 6 million dollars worth of grants. We just, we had 1 million. We just got 5 million. We already had a million and a half for design, which that's complete now, but, but that money can't be used for construction. So we have right now 6 million dollars for construction. As soon as we have that, uh, title to that property or a long-term lease, uh, then we will, uh, you know, have to bid it out. So we're probably looking at least 18 months, uh, to, uh, construct it and put it online.
And based on the flow we expect from that, how, how does it affect this timeline?
At all?
Um, well, that's not, uh, when you say timeline.
I got it, Jeff. The, so I know it's irrigation water, but the irrigation water that's going to come from the, the reservoir down 41 into the north then gets put through canal pump stations into our irrigation distribution system for those who are on centralized water and sewer to use. So we'll have almost zero impact on North Six because they don't have the abilities. Those people are still going to be using their wells to pull the irrigation water out. Thank you.
Yeah, really the only thing that eliminates, if they, if they choose to keep their private well for irrigation and not tie into our system is the domestic use, which usually nationwide is about 100 gallons per capita per day. So if there's two people living in the house, that'll be 200 gallons that is not being, uh, used from the aquifer less for each one of those houses. To put it into perspective.
So when we come back at the future COW, we have, like I said, an entire list of ideas. There's really only a couple, there's really like three ways to bend that curve of the aquifer depletion. One is to slow down growth, which is the whole point of the moratorium, right? It basically stops any further. It doesn't get rid of the existing straws that are pulling out of it. So one is to slow down the growth. Two is to, you know, the moratorium, which is to stop the growth. And then the three, the ones that we have the most impact on is how we reduce or limit the need for that coming out. So that would be things like the irrigation ordinance. Maybe we speed up implementing the, that type of irrigation system in that zone. Uh, maybe we allow those homes to, um, use turf grass where we don't allow anywhere else. Or maybe we, um, require, um, native landscaping. So that, there, what you're really trying to do is stop the, the, the consumption from that, from that well. And unless you're impacting that, then every straw that goes in continues to pull that curve down.
Councilmember Hayden.
Jeff, um, when North One comes online, and we know the urgency of what we face in this particular area up there, does that help our cause with the Water District? Knowing that ano- another section of the city that it was on well that may have fed into that aquifer is now on city utilities? Does that ease some of their cons-? I know, I know we have to continue with it, with this, but does that help our case a little bit when this area comes online?
Absolutely. It certainly does. Um, uh, definitely, as I was saying a minute ago to Councilmember Steinkie is that for every one of those straws that we're reducing those withdrawals from, um, it's going to help that aquifer to recover more rapidly. And we've looked at like south of Pine Island Road, once the UEPs went in, the aquifer was doing the same thing. It was continuing to decline, decline. Once the UEPs went online, within about three years, three to five years, the aquifer came back up and recovered, actually recovered to, uh, levels that it hadn't been in many, many years prior.
And I think it should be noted too, and I didn't say anything during, a couple of times when there was a couple of residents complaining about the UEP during citizen input. But part of the reason that we're in where we are, where we are right now is because the previous city council put a moratorium on the UEP and stopped this process for about four or five years. And I can probably say with a little bit of certainty that had they not done that, we wouldn't be facing this type of shortage with, with this aquifer because those areas would probably already have, um, city utilities. So even though it's history, um, and we have to move forward, I think it goes back to the original theme of what we're here to do today and that's plan our city, uh, for the future. And that particular council didn't have the foresight to do that and now it's in our hands and we have to have that. And not only planning what we do with building, but also for our environment. And that's why it's so important as we look at our future and not necessarily right now on where the city goes. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, and I agree with, uh, Councilmember Hayden. Um, I think, uh, we definitely have to make sure that we are looking, uh, to the future and the future needs of our city. Uh, the reservoir, uh, you know, that we've been talking about for the last few years and we've gotten some, uh, funding for that. I've, I've went out there myself and, and toured that facility with, uh, Mr. Pearson. Um, that's just one component of, of the big picture. And, um, I think what we have to make sure, I mean, with this particular, uh, well that it's in crisis levels, uh, you know, it, we're going to have to make sure we had addressed that. I will tell you some of the conversations I've had, uh, with, with, uh, South Water Management District was that, uh, you know, they're going to monitor this particular well extremely closely. And, um, if, if it gets to a level that Mr. Pearson mentioned, there, there will be a moratorium on, on any, uh, building. Also, they're going to take a look at the, uh, you know, two years out from now once we get, uh, North One completed, uh, they'll, they'll be looking at that, uh, those levels and monitor them as well. I, I personally believe we need to be proactive as well. Uh, so with that being said, uh, Mr. Pearson, do you have, could you give us, uh, just an estimate on time and a dollar amount for if we begin to do the design for North Six? Uh, how long does it take for that particular design and an approximate cost for that? And also the same with the North Plant that we're speaking about. How long does it take, uh, for that design and what's an approximate cost for just the design?
Great questions, Mayor. Uh, for the North Water Reclamation Facility, uh, I would estimate the design would take 18 to 24 months. Um, the cost of just design, we're probably looking at 25 million just for design. Uh, for the North Six area construction, it's kind of hard to say, um, until we actually get the bids in. But if it's, if history repeats itself with North One and North Two, we're probably looking at 300 to 350 million conservatively.
For just the design?
No, I'm sorry, ju- for construction and design.
14 million.
For design?
Just for design. That's, I mean, that's.
For Six?
North Three is coming to you at about 14 million.
Okay.
Uh, so we would expect that North Six would probably be very close to that.
And the 18 to 24 months for the, uh, North Plant, um, was that for design?
Yes.
Okay, and the 25 million was design only?
Yes.
Okay. You know, so, you know, just for design of, uh, North Six and, and the North Plant, I mean, that right there is about 40 million dollars, um, you know, that we have on the table. Uh, and, and that's just a, you know, a guesstimate. So I think, uh, you know, one of the things that, uh, we have to, I think, talk about and try to determine the direction we want to go is, you know, do we want to accelerate these type of projects? And I think, uh, you know, if the answer is yes, and then it's our financial director's responsibility to tell us how we're going to get there, you know, because it's a substantial amount of money. Uh, so I think at some point in time, and I'm not saying today is today, uh, but we're, we're going to have to have that discussion. Uh, you know, for me, I think, uh, looking at the, the time periods just for design and then the construction, uh, as Mr. Pearson said, five years from now, boy, that's just around the corner. When you're talking about these timelines just on design, we haven't even talked about construction yet. Uh, so, uh, this isn't a conversation, in my opinion, uh, that we can wait to have. That's something that we should have in the near future. Uh, and usually my understanding, Mr. Pearson, correct me, uh, uh, if I'm wrong, most of these wells, unless there is a substantial, uh, difference in the, uh, what you're asking of the well, the demand, uh, that's the only way you're going to see a, 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 really a big difference in the scales that you had shown us. You know, that's why North One hopefully will, will be pretty impactful, that be less of a demand on that particular well and hopefully. And we don't know exactly what that impact is going to be, how much of a positive impact that's going to be, I guess. That, that's the million-dollar question, I guess.
Right.
All right, well, with that being said, uh, any other discussions? I think it's definitely a, a discussion worthy that we're going to have to have here soon. Uh, and then hopefully, Mr. Mason, uh, you know, you can kind of maybe give us some ideas how we're going to pay for, for things like this.
As a matter of fact, we're going to be talking about one portion of that right now.
Okay. And, uh, Councilmember Corr, did you have something?
I just had, just a quick question, uh, more curious than anything, but that particular well that they're using to, um, that we're talking about right now in that rectangle, does, I mean, I know these, what's the next closest one east? In other words, is, are we the only ones impacting that particular well? Or are there, is North Fort Myers also impacting that well or that, the measure that you're using for us?
Um, I do know there are some issues out in Lehigh Acres, far east Lehigh Acres. They're seeing some similar issues. They've actually already implemented a, um, a program for that area. It's a small area that you can only drill a well for domestic use only, no outdoor irrigation. So they've already taken that step out in Lehigh, North Fort Myers. I believe there's some issues out there. I couldn't tell you exactly where the wells are. I don't have a map available. I could get that though. Um, there are issues in North Fort Myers. So it's not just Cape Coral that's seeing this even, and we're probably going to see more of this south of us, our neighbor south in Collier. They were over two feet below normal rainfall during this past rainy season. And the aquifers rely on that rainy season, um, precipitation to recover. And lately that has not been happening at, at a normal rate. So the aquifers are being impacted as well.
You don't even say ask, Mayor, I'm just curious if our action is the only thing impacting this well or are there others also?
So you were asking if someone else was drinking out of our bowl?
Pretty much, yeah. I mean, and I know that these, these wells exist for measuring purposes all around the state, right? And they're, and I'm not an expert by any means, but I know that they're fed in different ways by different sources. Some have more water flow going to them than others and I was just curious and I, you know.
Unfortunately, the way the geology is, it's not uniform.
Right.
Over the whole county. Um, there's, the geology here in this particular area, the aquifer actually comes up like a dome. So the, the area, the production zone is this thick and other areas it could be this thick. So naturally, if you've got an area this wide where you're dropping your straw in, you're going to have less water to be able to pull out of and it's not like a cup of water. It's, uh, it can take years and years and years for that water to travel through the soil, the sand and all of that.
Last question, I promise. Is that the, the area outlined, that's the only area that would be, uh, affected by, um, moratorium if the well goes below 100? Or is that, that's the identified area for that well?
Right now, Councilmember, that's the area that they have put the water shortage declaration on. Um, that certainly could change. Um, we did an analysis of this area, uh, took us about a year to do. Um, after they first, uh, said there was an issue, uh, maybe less than a year ago this past year, um, or we're coming on, up on about a year since they first said something about it. Um, but our study showed that there might be another production zone, two production zones. Um, and so potentially the district could say, if you drill deeper into another production zone, you may be okay. So that's something as well that, um, could buy us more time to get that North Plant online. But eventually, if we keep dropping more and more straws in there, it's not going to matter if there's a second production zone or not. It's going to deplete the aquifer.
Yeah, I was just worried, Mayor, even if we. Yeah, I was just worried, Mayor, even if we do our best to make it as fast as possible, is it gonna be enough? I guess that's really the unknown, right? Thank you.
Mm-hmm. One, go ahead.
I just have one quick question, and for citizens that are watching. Can you give us an idea, uh, um, looking at the map, it's, it's hard to know the location, like where the left line approximately begins, uh, roadwise, and maybe where the right line is, and the top and the bottom? Just so we have a, an idea?
Yeah, absolutely. This, the, the outline here, of course, this is Pine Island Road. This is Northeast Twenty-Fourth.
Okay.
This is Gator Slough. That's the canal that we pump the water into every year from the northeast reservoir, and this is Gleason, right here.
Okay. I think that'll help citizens know if they're in that location and that they should try to conserve. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I think something else I wanna mention that I know hasn't been mentioned today is, myself and the city manager, uh, were in discussions with the executive director of South Florida Water Management District. And actually, that area that you see outlined now is a smaller area. The South Florida Water Management District wanted to take that completely to the west, all the way over. And in our discussions, uh, we asked them to first, let's do the smaller section first, and basically monitor it and see how much of an improvement there is if we do some restrictions. And they said that they would do that, but if they don't see the improvements that they're looking for, that cone that you see now will go all the way to the west. So that is still a possibility, and the only thing that'll determine that is the data that we get from monitoring what we have now. So we may either have to implement some additional steps in that zone, or worst-case scenario, is that zone could grow. So I just thought that was important to mention.
Yeah, I was gonna, uh, also, so when you're looking at, um, the other well, which is to the west, they had initially indi- indicated, as the mayor said, they wanted to do everything north of Pine Island Road, and so we, we fought for the science. We said, listen, if we don't have the science and we put the message out, then we're gonna lose trust, and we're gonna lose that communication that we have with our residents. So they went through two or three times back to their board, and the board came back to the, their executive director and legislative, and, and eventually, they ended up agreeing with us that the best thing to do at this point is to focus on the area with the well that's impacted. There's still, I think, on the chart that we looked at for the other well, if you trend line that down, it's not tw- two thousand eight, it's like two thousand twelve or fourteen. So it's still going down, but, uh, it's starting from a higher level. Um, just a couple of things on, on impact, so to, to kind of put the decision-making to real issues and outcomes. So if you dr- if we do nothing, and we're able to convince the district to, to not do a moratorium, then what they'll, they will do, as Jeff said, is drill deeper. Well, what does that mean? So they're gonna be then in a situation like the people west of Old Burnstow are, where they're gonna need to be in a, in a, um, a Yuri saline well. So they're gonna need an RO system. Well, the difference in costs between just drilling a well and having to drill a deeper well, I went and met with well drillers and then equipment suppliers when this first came up. So the well driller said that they are gonna, they're gonna need more pipe, they're gonna need to drill deeper, it needs more grout, more sealing. In addition to that, it, it costs long, it takes longer, so it's gonna cost more for the well. And then the pump that they have to put, once you go beyond the aquifer that they're in now, which is only a one-horse pump, they're gonna have to go to a two-horse pump. So that means the electrical draw is two times as much now to get the same water. But then, when it gets to the surface, because it's salty, now you need an RO system, and then that costs money to further pressurize it to push the salt out. And your waste, you have wastewater from that, because now you create a really salty water and a freshwater. So when all that was said and done, discussing this with them, it was twenty thousand dollars. And so if you do, if we, if we don't do this, we're gonna be saddling these people with a twenty thousand dollar well compared to a thirty thousand dollar assessment, and then when the assessment comes through, now they have a thirty thousand dollar assessment. So now it's fifty thousand all in for water. Plus, the cost of electric for them is way more than what it would be for a regular well that they have today by going deeper. So those are some of the, the real-world impacts that I was able to get from the well drillers and then the supply companies that give these, uh, people, uh, what they would need. Um, and then the other thing is if, even if the, we were able to somehow convince them that the moratorium wasn't, um, needed and they, they went deeper, if, even if they went to even something less than that, which is you cannot have an irrigation system on a new home, which is what they're doing in, in the Lehigh Well area that's impacted. Now imagine that, that entire ten square miles of the city will have brown grass all year long, except for the three months when it's raining. You can, you won't be able to irrigate trees, sod, I mean, none of it. So we, we end up, in essence, to allow growth without wa- without the irrigation, you, you end up creating like a blighted area. And so the, you know, unfortunately for us, that, you know, the, the outcomes of not doing something, I think, are, are worse than us reshuffling the deck or, you know, fast-tracking is a, you know, reordering, whatever word we wanna use, um, because then it allows us to, to continue moving forward.
Okay. Any other, uh, questions, comments on this topic?
Uh, one comment I'd like to make, um, or at least get some discussion on, um, is, uh, impact fees. So you said, you know, growth pays for growth, and it seems that we haven't raised impact fees since, uh, two thousand four. So if we're looking at potentially having to bring this North Water Plant into a bigger capacity faster because of these wells, I would really like to look at, uh, an impact fee study. I know that we talked about it and-
Send next presentation.
Okay. I don't know if I was ahead. I was trying to-
Is that quick enough for you?
I didn't.
We got a whole presentation.
Well, I, I was looking through, and I saw it says like capital expansion fees, but that to me is an impact. Okay. I thought that was just what the UEP is, the capital expansion fees. Impact fees would be on new homes anywhere in the city, not just within the UEP area, correct?
UEP is called capital facility expansion.
Okay.
It could be, it could be assessed for, but it is a capital expansion fee, which is an impact.
Okay. I tried to get ahead, apparently.
Somehow this, this not working.
Okay. Thank you. Never mind. I'll wait for, for the next presentation, though.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pearson. We appreciate the, uh, presentation. We look forward for, uh, future discussion on this topic.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to introduce, uh, Mr. Dykstra, and he's going to talk about impact fees.
See if I can raise this up a little bit. All right. Good afternoon, um, Mayor Council, good to be with you. Jeff Dykstra, Principal at Stan Tech Consulting Services. Um, we have the privilege to perform the capital expansion fee study, i.e. impact fee study for the city's water and sewer system. Um, I've got about a fifteen or so slide presentation we'll walk through this eve- this afternoon, and open any questions you may have. Um, probably doesn't need a whole lot of introduction, but essentially, you know, synopsis, the capital, um, expansion fee, such as you have, is a one-time fee for capacity, or the improvements or projects needed to serve new growth. Um, it's one-time fee. The idea of it is that the cost burden of those, that new infrastructure should not be borne immediately by the, uh, existing ratepayers, and the growth should pay for itself. Um, those expansion fees can be used in really two main methods, and they're also outlined in your, your resolution. That is, number one, to fund future expansion-related projects. That would be like a new treatment plant, for example. Um, but it can also be used, um, to fund debt service that was taken to fund those types of facilities. So, but both of those options are, are legal, um, uh, uses of those funds, and we see those both used throughout the industry. It's important, as Mark Indicator alluded to, as a potential, not a potential, but it is a funding source that the city has to, uh, fund some of the growth that we've been talking about today. Um, to put things into perspective, the graph on the right there just shows the por- proportion of the growth-related CIP that the utility has that is related to growth. So out of almost a billion dollars plus of the next several years that the utility has in its CIP, about sixty-four percent of it is to serve new growth. Um, and you can see just by the graph, the yellow bar indicates most of that is on the wastewater side. Um, and that's largely in part because of the, um, new facility that Jeff was referring to, but estimated about two hundred and fifty million dollars is what staff is looking at right now, uh, for that treatment plant. Out of that six hundred forty, six hundred and fifty-ish million dollars of growth-related CIP through 2027, these are the vast majority of the projects, um, that, that are identified, so that we have the North Water Reclamation Facility, that's a big one. Um, we have a couple of transmission-related projects, and then there's also the North RO, uh, Water Treatment Plant Expansion as well in there. Just to try to give you an idea of what some of the specific projects that, that you'll be, um, the utility is planning on funding. So how are we gonna pay for that? Um, well, historically, it's been, um, combination of sources. It includes, uh, rates from users, capacity, uh, expansion fees, and then, you know, any other available funds that the utility may have. Um, but since two thousand and eight, just wanted to provide a little bit of historical cost perspective here. Uh, it's been mentioned in just presentation that the, the capital expansion fees have, haven't been adjusted since two thousand and four. Um, since two thousand and eight, which is what the graph, or two thousand and nine that the graph shows, if you just look at a, you know, engineering news record cost indices on, on capital construction costs, that's gone up by sixty percent. So it doesn't mean that your impact fees or, uh, capital expansion fees should have gone up by the same amount, but just to provide a little bit of context, um, as we've, as the city has left its fees flat, um, costs have not remained flat, and that's, uh, one of the issues, I think, that we're dealing with today. Don't wanna go too mo- too far into the weeds about the calculations, but this just provides a quick overview of the process and the methodology used. So we look at the existing assets that the system has, and a portion of those assets are available to serve new growth. So we factor in your existing facilities, and we add in any additional growth-related capital improvements that the utility has. That becomes basically the numerator in the calculation, and our denominator, uh, to get a per ERU or per equivalent residential unit, uh, fee, the nu- the denominator there becomes your, your ERUs for the system. Um, a couple of adjustments or credits that are made, so we wanna make sure that we're deducting the cost of any, um, other funding sources that might come to the utility, whether that's, um, you know, a grant, for instance, whether that's non-capacity-related projects. All of those dollars and costs come out of the, the calculation, so that we're not resulting in a situation where you're, you know, double-dipping or, um, duplicating cost recovery. Within the city, you have, um, a couple of different, you know, unique, I would say, impact or, uh, capital expansion fee structures. Number one is you have the option, um, in certain areas of the city, for water service to either have irrigation as well as potable water, or just potable water in areas that irrigation is not available. And so I'll start with the top part. That's the dual, we call that dual service. So that's water plus irrigation. Um, and then on the wastewater side, whether you're in District One or District Two, um, not City Council District necessarily, what those refer to is, uh, District One for wastewater would be parts of the city prior to Southwest Four. Um, and then District Two would in, would it be anything beyond, um, UEP areas beyond Southwest, uh, Four. So then, if you, um, if you just have potable water service, you don't have the irrigation fee, but you do have a slightly different water fee, because you don't have the benefit of, um, the irrigation system and the costs that are built into that fee. So what you can see is here, what you'll see is, within the city, there are several different combinations of which capital expansion fees a, a customer might have to pay. Uh, the most common is going to be, um, particularly in the UEP areas and, and other parts, is gonna be the, the dual service, where you have water, potable water, irrigation, and then it's typically the District Two, uh, wastewater fee. So I, as we, the next couple of slides are gonna cover the results of, of the updated study. Uh, first, on the water side, the left graph shows the dual service. So this is gonna be with potable water and with irrigation. Um, and we've, we've called out those separately. You can see that there are substantial increases as reflected, that would be reflected by full cost recovery relative to what the fees are now. Um, on the right side is gonna be the single service fee, uh, for water, uh, water only, and that's gonna be about a, that reflects about a nineteen percent, just under a five hundred dollar increase on the single service side. For sewer, the, we have the two, uh, fees shown here, District One and District Two, those are both more than thirty percent increases over their current levels, um, which, you know, what we see is really the main driver for sewer is gonna be the cost of that water reclamation facility. Um, that's the primary reason, if I could summarize the increase on the wastewater side, that's gonna be the, the primary culprit. I do wanna flip back, uh, something I forgot to mention on the water side is, um, this shows the increase over current fee levels, but it's not, your, your fees were not implemented at full cost during the prior, uh, study, and so, um, that study, particularly on the water side, did show higher cost than what fees you have implemented today. That just weren't ultimately implemented by the city. So this is an increase over the current fee, not over the, the most recent studies' identified cost.
Quick question on that, just to make sure I understand that correctly. Uh, the graph to the left there where it says existing for dual service, so today, uh, the rates are thirty-three hundred and sixty dollars?
Yeah.
And the calculated rate, uh, that your recommendation to go to is the, uh, forty, sixty, forty-seven hundred?
Just over forty-seven, yeah.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
That's, what you see here in under calculated, that's another word for calculated, would be full cost recovery. That's what it's cost, that, that's the full cost for the city. Any dollars that aren't recovered from, uh, capital expansion fees ultimately falls on the responsibility of, uh, the ratepayer if the improvements are made. Ultimately, the ratepayer is the, the backbone of the, uh, the financial backbone for the system. So every dollar that you get from impact fees, or every dollar you don't get from these fees, if the dollar is spent and the project is executed, it comes back to the ratepayer. And so there's a, um, kind of a circularity here where, you know, we're, we're concerned about ratepayer affordability, obviously. We wanna minimize rate increases. Um, we know that they are in the, in the utility's latest plans is, is the need for future rate acc- rate increases. Um, but the level of this CIP, particularly the growth, um, is such that if we don't increase the, the capital expansion fees, um, not saying that rate increases are gonna be eliminated by any means from your ratepayers, um, but, but any dollar more you can get from these fees is gonna minimize the impact to your, the rest of your ratepayers. Um, the graph on the right just shows an example of outside of the, the, um, the UEP areas, that, that will be assessed ultimately. Uh, when you look at your, the revenues for the next ten years from your existing expansion fees at their current levels to what they would be at full cost, it's about a twenty million dollar difference in revenues. And that's not including, um, that's just kind of your infill, if you will, for the system. And so that has, you know, that, that has a, an impact, um, on the financial capability of the system, and the revenues generated, minimized future borrowing. Um, but this is an example of a, one, one resource that you have to generate more revenues to fund these projects. Hopefully, you can see this, but this is just a comparison of, uh, within, you know, a local comparison, I'll call it, within, um, surrounding cities and counties of what the capital facility expansion fees are. Um, capital expansion fees, some, some communities call them impact fees, some call them system development charges. Ultimately, um, we're on the same page here, I think, in terms of referring to them as impact fees and capital expansion fees. But this just shows you a comparison for single and dual service. That's gonna be in the lighter orange there, at your existing levels, and then the black indicates what they would be relative to others at full cost recovery. Um, just to provide a little bit of perspective there. On the sewer side, same, same sort of thing. The orange graph, or the orange bars show your current fees for District One and District Two. The black shows what they would be under the full cost recovery, uh, as a result of our study. When you combine them, um, so when you look at a dual service, and we looked at, this just reflects the District Two sewer fee- reflects the District Two sewer fees for comparison purposes, but when you combine everything at full cost, single service and full, and dual service, you are towards the top at full cost recovery. But I think that graph, the bar on the right or the table on the right is really important in this because what we see with communities in the industry that do have done recent impact fee studies or capital expansion fee studies, those that have done them recently are seeing the much higher fees on this graph. So when you look at this, you know, you start to see, you know, utilities maybe towards the bottom or communities towards the bottom, those are sometimes fees that haven't been adjusted in, you know, many, many, many years. There's also a really wide variety of, we see this big spread just because of a lot of different situations. You have age of system, technologies that are different, you know, Keporl's in an interesting spot because of all the growth opportunity that you have and the infrastructure needed for that. You've got density, you have different treatment technologies, a whole host of reasons why fees are different. And unfortunately, within the industry too, these types of fees don't get evaluated as much as they should. The city has done a good job, at least of doing reviews every three to four years in the past. But it's important to take action and be able to make sure that these fees are meeting your costs. So that, that was kind of a synopsis of the actual results of the, of the study that we did. Now we'll shift gears a little bit and talk about potential implementation. So back in 2021, the Florida impact fee, as it's referred to, the state legislature and the governor signed some modifications to that back in 2021. And one of those provisions was, or one of the changes that they made was limiting the amount of the increase, that an increased impact fee can, can be. Specifically, an increase can only be increased by 50%. And if it's increased by 50%, it has to be phased in over four years if it's greater than 25, if it's between 25 and 50%. Any impact fee increase from, you know, up to 25% has to be phased in over a two-year period. And so when we looked at this, I'll talk about an exception to that in a moment, but when we looked at that, we are ultimately recommending with, with staff support here is that four-year phase-in where it makes sense or where it's applicable. So for all of the fees that you see here, the only one that exceeds 50% is the water dual service. If you remember back to a couple of slides earlier, that's going up by full cost recovery, would say that it's about 80, 80-some percent. So following that statute limitation there on the four-year phase-in over 50%, we would be capped at that level. So you'll see from the current level at 11:06, 50% increase on that would put that fee around 16:59. The other four on the table there, the increases are less than 50%, so you could phase those in up to the full cost. It's just a matter of how quickly, whether it's four years or two years. So the wastewater side or sewer side, those are greater than 25% increases, so those can be, those have to be phased in over a four-year period. The irrigation and the water single service, less than 25%, you can phase that in over a two-year period to full cost recovery. So this is just a quick snapshot of what the phase-in increases would look like up to the maximum allowable by the statute. And this is a pictorial depiction of that phase-in, and this just shows for a typical customer what that would look like. So currently, if you're in District Two for wastewater and you have dual service, so water, potable water and irrigation, you're paying 6750 in ERU. That's a single-family home essentially. By year four, that would be about 8750 per ERU, factoring in those same services. Which I do want to point out, because of the 50% limitation on the sewer, sewer two or the sewer fees, I'm sorry, the water dual service fee, we don't quite get to full cost recovery, which was around 91 or 9200, if you remember that prior slide, but we get pretty close to full cost with this plan. So a couple of just takeaways and conclusions here. The current fees, I think we recognize are below cost and have the opportunity, you have the option to increase them up to those levels that we, that we discussed. They are, that would provide us a supporting revenue source for, funding source for some of this infrastructure that we're talking about. Again, any dollar generated from these fees is going to minimize the burden on your existing On the comparison, your existing fees are pretty comparable at the moment, and especially by phasing them in over four years, you are on the upper end typically of the scale or the comparison, but you still are comparable, and that's not factoring in any increases that those other communities might, might have over the next four or five years as well. As part of the study, I didn't really touch on this in the presentation much, but the application of an impact or the fees on your customers is per ERU for a single family. So basically, a single-family home pays that ERU. Non-resident, or yeah, non-residential or commercial customers, they have that ERU scaled by the meter size. So if you have a larger meter size, you're going to pay a multiple ERUs depending on that size. So we looked at that methodology and don't recommend any changes on that. That's, that's industry practice, and so that's a, we're recommending continuation of that. And then I touched on this, but do recommend, again, continuing as you have done to perform those periodic updates to these fees. As new, new cost estimates come in, as your plans change, whether it be moving a North Six before North Four or something like that, you want to make sure that you have an updated study every three to four or five years as you have done to make sure that your fees are reflective of your cost. From an implementation standpoint, really have three options. One is we could, you shouldn't have the option to take no action, maintain the existing fees. Option two is what we're recommending is that phased-in approach over a four-year period. Option three is, is a possibility. I mentioned there is an exception in the Florida Impact Fee Act on increases. You are allowed to implement full cost fees that are above, you know, would represent increases over 50%, provided you do a couple of things. Number one is you have to perform a demonstrated needs analysis. You have to hold two publicly dedicated workshops relative to that analysis, and then you need a two-thirds council approval on that. So the changes in 2021 to the, to that Florida Impact Fee Act added a few steps or layers and processes that you'd have to go through if you wanted to go that route. And then there's a 90-day period, notice period, between when the fees are approved to when they could be implemented. So all three of those are open. The caveat on three, I will say, is we haven't seen there really be a, challenge is the wrong word, but somebody who taken to the courts about what does a demonstrated needs extraordinary circumstances mean? So we have had some clients that said, hey, we have a, really a strong need to increase our impact fees, we're going to go for it even though the increases are greater than 50%. But we just haven't seen how, you know, the courts have reacted to that. So, you know, I'll point that out as a, as an area to look at or consider. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and discussion. I know a lot of material and not an easy topic.
Okay, I'll open up the floor for any discussion. Just real quick for me, I don't, didn't see anybody jump to the microphone, but real quick for me, you know, I know many, many times you hear growth to pay for growth. And, you know, my understanding, if we decide to go with option two or option three, this will be implemented citywide. So in other words, if an individual is building a new home down in South Cape, they're going to pay the same fees as someone in the Northwest. I just want to make sure that's an accurate statement.
The only, the only difference is going to be if you're in District One on sewer versus District Two.
Right. And the reason I mention that, I can, the first thing that I know you're going to hear is individuals in, in South Cape going, we've already paid for this. You know, we've already, you know, we, we had the necessary plants, the transmission line, the systems in place. You know, why do we have to bear the cost of the additional plant and what is needed up in the north? So, you know, that's just one thing that came to mind. You know, I understand that we typically try to apply our rates citywide, but that's just one, one thing that I know we're going to hear as a council probably.
There's also a couple of other things. North One East was designed for the car rates. So if we implemented these rates, they would go into effect citywide, but the first UEP that would be affected by these rates is North Three. I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that. From a tiny standpoint, we would put the rates in place, but since North Two, North One West and Southwest Six, Seven and R B there is, it's, and North One East was originally designed under the old rates. And so, you know, any flows from North One would go down south, et cetera, et cetera. So the only time North, North Two, Southwest Six, Seven, North One West, or even North One East would actually be charged a higher impact fee would be if there was a higher, there was more ERUs, a higher capacity issue when it came time for somebody to develop that property.
There's a lot more nuances that are associated with this. Jeff has given you a very high level on this one, but there's a lot more nuances that go with this. Our recommendation is, is that we come back with the implementation. There's a 90-day implementation timeframe. You saw all of this from, you know, the option one, you know. Our recommendation is we go with the full cost, we implement it in the timeframe, that the statute currently recommends. And as again, the first full UEP that would experience these new rates would be North Three.
So your recommendation is different than what our individual?
Sorry, I'm in North Two, yeah. Not the full cost, North Two. Option Two, I bet.
Option Two?
Yeah, option Two.
All right.
I'm looking right at it and I'm sitting there going, it is option two that we're recommending, yes.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Steinke?
Thank you. I just, when I, when I went to your, it looks like in our backup materials, I think, screen 88, it shows the calculated capital expansion fees and has the existing and calculated, and the mayor asked to kind of confirm the math, and it looked like we went, we went from $3,400 to $4,700, something like that. So when we talk about the percentages, and if it's up to 25%, if it's up to 50%, 25% and 50% sound like really, really big numbers. Boiling that back, it looks like the difference is $1,300. And when we consider a average cost of develop, average cost of a home, if they, right now, if the average cost of home that's being put up is $400,000, we're talking about a .3% difference, not a 25%, not a 50%. And so if, if this helps with the strain, if it helps accomplish the objective quicker, I just want to make sure that we're really talking about the dollars and cents piece of it and how much it actually is, and the risk that we're taking by not doing this as quickly as we can for overburdening our overall tax base. I, I'd like to think more about the $1,300 than I would 25% or 50% in making the decision of which, which way we want to go. So I would just throw that into the decision-making of boiling it down to the actual check that needs to be written in comparison to the actual home that's being built. I think it makes a difference.
So it just, I think the alternative, if I heard it correctly, the alternative is that all ratepayers have an increase to cover these costs. So in other words, we either do it through new construction and impact fees or a combination of that and ratepayer fees to cover the cost of this expansion, correct? I mean, so in other words, this, either all the residents pay a small piece, new construction pays all the needs that we have for the expansion, or there's some shared method that we haven't discussed, if, if I'm hearing correctly?
Mark, you want to?
Yeah. If you can go to the final page with the options.
Sure.
If I understood, councilmember Steinke, you're talking about the difference between option three and option two.
Yes.
That, that's the $1,300. In order for us to demonstrate the need to do it immediately, there has, I mean, there has to be some reason to do it immediately, with the understanding that North Three, which would be the first area that would be impacted by this, it's construction-wise and setting an assessment and design-wise, it's over a year and a half, two years away. So the immediate need is not there. And so I, and so the real question is, is I, if we were to be challenged on it, would we win based upon demonstrated need and the workshops that we would have on that?
I see.
So the reason why we went through this and, and is, and making the recommendation that, look, the law provides for a two- or four-year timeframe to do the implementation. We may find two years from now, when we go back out and we look at it and, you know, determine the cost, et cetera, et cetera, whatever additional capacity enhancements we need to do, that the demonstrated need may be then, not today. We recognize that the capacity improvements we need to do are on the horizon, they're there. We're calculating the fees accordingly, and we're ready to implement those fees based upon the timeframes that they've limited us to. When I say they, the legislature has limited us to. But two years from now, the demonstrated need may have changed. So the time now is to get something in place, and if something changes in the future, then we come back and we do something different.
And the only, the only fee that does not get to full cost recovery in year four is going to be this water fee?
Correct. And it, and again, during the timeframe, full cost versus, you know, this implementation method, yes, the current ratepayers will end up having some impact because of this. I mean, this is a legislative action that requires us to do it this way. And so the, the current ratepayers will have some impact associated with it.
Because of the limitations put on us?
Correct.
By the legislature?
Correct. Thank you.
Councilmember Haynes, then I'll go to councilmember Welsh.
Yeah, I, I don't mind option two, but help, help me understand the math here. So let's say two new, let's say 2,000 new homes come online and they're paying that impact fee in a year at 87, at $8,751. That comes out to about 1.6 million in impact fees. Am I, am I doing the math correctly? And so I'm trying to understand the significance of, you know, and I know there are several funding sources that have to go to any expansion at this level. And so that, that would be about the amount, right, of impact fees that are paid per those new homes that may come online in a year? Am I, am I understanding that correctly?
You, you are. One of the also that, you know, when you're looking at a UEP and you're talking about, you know, four to 5,000 properties or ERUs that are being charged this, now you're talking about real money, a lot bigger numbers that end up covering the cost of the capacity and improvements that we're actually doing in those UEP areas and the expansion of the plants that will service those areas.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I was just trying to understand the math a little bit more. And if it's, you know, if it's, if it's 4,000 homes, then we're looking at 3.2 million. So, you know, I, I understand it all helps, but I was just trying to understand it in my own head and put it in perspective.
Yeah, I hate to correct the math, but it's 17 million as opposed to the 1.7, my bad.
Did I put my comment in the wrong place?
Well, I, I didn't, you know, 17 million, you know, it...
Well, that, that, that makes me feel a little bit better now that I, that I screwed it up in the first place, so...
I really hated to do the correction of the math, but 1.7 versus 7 is a big number.
He's a journalist.
Okay, with words sometimes, but not necessarily with math, so...
Again, my apologies for the correction.
I think Mark's correction this morning was bigger.
You know, I, and I like that, you've corrected me many times, so that's why, that's why I threw it out there. Thank you.
50,000 versus 58 million, I mean, that's a big number too, so, you know, we'll go with that correction.
Mr. Mason set the standard this morning.
I followed it, I bought right into it.
Councilmember Welsh?
Yes, you know, we haven't addressed impact fees in 20 years. And obviously, the city's grown and the needs are, are a lot greater 20 years in the future. So I, being that we can do this in a four-year period instead of all at once with a lot less headache or having to prove the reason why we need to do it in one year, I would totally support the four-year increase and try to get us... totally support the four-year increase and try to get us closer to cost recovery on the services we are providing. So that's where I would be at with that. I think it's important that we keep up with the times, especially in a city that's growing as fast as ours is.
We'll be doing this presentation again tomorrow afternoon.
Yeah, it seems, and I'm, you know, I'm, my fourth year on council, and it seems like every year we talk about it, and that's all we do. So I'd like to see some action this year on that, to at least get this implemented, being that this is, you know, potentially the last year I'll be on council, so.
All right, we're prepared to put the ordinance together. If there's a consensus for us to do that, then we'll bring that forward.
Councilmembers Steinke?
Thank you. Just to further clarify the math on it, the, since it would be a four-year implementation, and each year it would be bumped, if you would, those houses that come online that we're talking about, the houses that come online in year one have a lesser impact than those that come in year two, year three, and year four. So it's, so you can't take all the homes that come in over the four years and multiply the full difference by them for the amount of money that comes in. So it'll be a diminished impact year one. So you won't get the full impact of the overall increase for four years. The first three years will be diminished impact, and that then also, you know, then contributes to the user rate for those people to make up for it in those, in those first three years. So it'll be kind of a vanishing contribution from the existing users until we get to that fourth year. And when we do this calculation again four years from now, the rate will need to go up because of costs going up by then.
It will, but just as a reminder, the bulk of the homes that are currently being built is in an, in the area that doesn't have water and sewer. And so the infill area, which actually is south of Pine Island Road for the most part, the number of vacant lots is limited, that will actually end up being impacted by these numbers. These numbers really impact the ones that are actually going to be, end up reaping the benefit from the capacity improvements, which are the new wastewater treatment plant and the expansion of the North RO plant, which is basically north of Pine Island Road.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I think it's also important to maybe mention that, you know, if this two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar project that is needed for our North plant, I guess this will help with our revenue bonds that we'll have to take out in order to?
They will.
To help to pay for that. So I just wanted to make sure that was mentioned as well to the community.
As an example, you know, when we, you know, we, if we collected all of the impact fees on the assessments right off the bat, then the overall cost would be a lot less than we'd have to borrow, but we don't. You know, we have options for people to prepay, but, you know, that just, that does decrease the amount of the, the actual amount that we actually end up issuing. But it will help in supporting the current ratings we have on our bonds.
And one last thing I wanted to mention, maybe Mr. City Manager, you know, I think this is going to be a topic of concern for the community, not to include, you know, the construction industry. I think we have to make sure that, you know, we try to get that message out with some clear information. This is what the need is, this is what the cost is, show the different scenarios, and make sure we get that information out to the community, so they see that it is a need for our community and not a one.
Do you want us to bring this back to a COW for?
I think at some point.
Or do you want us to go right, right to the, I mean, we can do the COW so we can talk about some additional numbers and maybe explain a little more than, I mean, we're in a budget workshop here discussing the financial impacts, but if you want us to talk more about the improvements and the utility side, we can do, we can do that at a COW and then go to an.
Yeah, that's what I would recommend, and then, you know, we can address that a little more in detail, and also that gives the opportunity to get that information out to the community, give them the opportunity to weigh in, and then we can make a better informed decision if we have all the information.
Well, I guess that's the question here today. I know you just kind of mentioned it, is do we want to run that in tandem as far as moving forward with the ordinance to some degree while also scheduling the COW so that we're not delaying it further? To me, that's something we should consider when you put into perspective the urgency that's required. Is that something that we could theoretically decide here today?
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can do the first reading, introduce the ordinance, get it advertised with a three- or four-week date and do a COW.
Yeah, and we could still have the opportunity to make minor tweaks if we needed to as a result of the COW, but I think, to the mayor's point, it's more of an informational thing for the COW. And so that's, just to kind of follow up on that, that's the one thing that I was going to do, as far as speaking on this topic today, was commend staff for how they presented the issue as far as starting with the need and then ultimately landing here. And so if we could somehow condense that into a much more compact form as far as messaging to the public, as far as the need as well as the, because you know, of course, the media is just going to go to this slide here without documenting the need. So if we have something put together that purvey's that information in a clear way, similar to what you guys have done today, in more detail, that would be appreciated.
No worries.
Thank you.
So are you looking for a consensus today on the three options, Mr. City Manager? Is that what you're looking for, or are you okay to this point? Because it sounds like, if I hear councilmember Long correctly, I think, you know, it's almost like we'll do both in parallel.
Yeah, I didn't hear anybody saying that you wanted to go to the full cost recovery right away. If you did, then, you know, it's incumbent on me to tell you, we need to do that urgent needs analysis, which we have not done.
Okay.
So that would slow it down a little bit.
So with the information today, I guess everybody's comfortable with option two?
Which, to be clear, is what staff recommends, including yourself, Mr. Mason, because I know you had said full cost recovery, but then went to two, so I wanted to make sure that.
My bad, it's option two.
No, that's okay, I just wanted to be clear, because, you know, I would change my mind if we felt differently, so.
And Santa Car professional that did an evaluation.
That would be my suggestion.
Okay. All right, thank you for the presentation. We appreciate you coming out today.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks, Jeff, appreciate it.
Any other discussion on topic C, five C, Mr. City Manager?
No, that's.
I guess, do we need a consensus for you to move forward in?
I think you got it.
I know we chose where we're direction we wanted to go, but as far as whether we were going to continue or wait for the COW, I just want to be clear.
No, so with the plan, as I understand it, if, just let me lay it out to you all, is we will prepare the ordinance with the city attorney's office. We will schedule an introduction that does put a little risk on you all, because the ordinance will be coming to first reading without the COW. So for anyone who's not watching today, they may be somewhat blindsided, hey, how are we getting here without a discussion? So, or we could just do the traditional, where we just bring it to a COW, next one available, we have the discussion, and then schedule the hearing without a longer delay.
I'd like the second one better.
Yeah, you go.
I like the COW better, yeah.
The COW would still take place, I think that's what we're missing here. I'm just trying to alleviate the need for, we've got public noticing, two sessions, introduction.
No, it sounded like it was going to go right to.
We waited a month for a COW, we waited another two months for the readings.
It sounded like it was going to go right to ordinance and introduction, and then wait three or four weeks before we decide on it, but by then, the ordinance is already well on its way of being established, whereas I think the COW puts us in a better position to.
Well, sure, my point is the ordinance is going to be the ordinance, it's significantly boilerplate language, with the exception of any rate changes or any modifications that we would make, which are theoretically numbers that we could plug in. I'm just trying to be efficient, I'm not trying to certainly blindside anybody, but if the public had input, I presume it would be related to the cost, which to me is something we could easily switch, rather than telling the city attorney to draft something that would be ninety-eight percent the same now versus three months from now, when we schedule for introductions.
I was just thinking, why couldn't we do a COW, one week, the following week, we do the intro? I mean, why does there have to be a delay?
Well, because I don't know that the city attorney's office is going to be able to turn her around in one week if we.
Well, like you said, though, if they kind of have a boilerplate ready.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Modification to the COW.
But they need direction to do that.
I think the first optional Mike was saying was that the intro would come before the COW, which would create some difficulty for the public, I think. There we go.
Oh, I didn't realize our city manager, our city attorney was here today.
Coming from the rafters. Allow me a few moments to watch.
Looks like you're going to have to tell a joke. So let me, let me address a couple concerns. A prudent thing to do, what I recommend, is to go to a COW. And the reason why I say that is that will identify at least the parameters of the proposed legislation that will come before you all. And the reason why I say that is if we start tinkering with it between first reading and second reading, we may have a title change, and that will require a new first reading. So I want to make sure that we don't want to follow that requirement, because if we start changing the title, based upon what I'm hearing, I'm hearing a lot of discussion here, I'd rather not do that to you all, folks, if in fact, we have something that's a material modification of the title that will force us to go to another reading, which is another delay. And it sounds like you guys don't want to delay. So for me, I wouldn't deviate from our process, which is having the COW meeting, we identify that, we work out all the issues, we come to a first reading, then following that, we have the actual second reading of the ordinance. Unless I'm missing something, but I'm trying to keep you guys flowing, and that's the best way to do that, without potentially running afoul between first and second reading. Because it sounds like you guys want to do first reading, at least what I heard, and then a committee of the whole meeting in between the first and second reading. And that's where I'm a little bit concerned, we may run afoul of that requirement of the title.
The only reason I brought it forth is because we have a consensus today as to the basis of how we want to proceed. And so, in an effort to alleviate what is so often unnecessary delays, I figured that we could do that in tandem. If that's not your goal, then certainly I'd.
I will certainly work with the administration to expedite it as quickly as possible to avoid any delays, and hopefully, I've been trying to do that since I've been here, and I'm not going to change course in that regard. But I don't want, like I said, I don't want to, I don't want to put you guys up against the wall, it's just, it's unproductive, in my opinion. So that's why I'm recommending we go to the COW and we proceed accordingly.
Thank you.
And Mr. City Manager, could you have, do you have an estimated time when staff will be prepared to have a discussion at a COW meeting?
Two fourteen.
Okay, all right.
We're ready to rock and roll.
Be Valentine's Day.
And potential first reading the following week.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? I think it's a good direction. Okay, any other items on this topic, Mr. City Manager? All right, why don't we take a ten-minute break before we get into item D? It's about two forty, we'll come back at two fifty.
......
We're going to move on to item 5D, which is the multi-modal transportation master plan. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to have Laura Dodd from Public Works, our transportation planner, kick this one off.
Good afternoon. Laura Dodd, Principal Transportation Planner with Public Works Department. Today I have a presentation from our consultant, Ned Byer with Volker, of the preliminary final recommendations for the multi-modal transportation master plan. So while some of you may be familiar with the background and have seen presentations previously on this plan's progress, let me give you some additional background. This plan initially started in March of last year and has been evolving to find background data and to tailor itself to the city's new transportation master plan per our strategic initiatives. So with that being said, Ned Byer is going to provide the presentation on our plan. Thank you. And then shortly after, I will be providing a presentation on road impact fees versus mobility fees.
Thank you, Laura. Mayor, Council, Mr. City Manager, and your transportation team, it's a pleasure to be here with you today. It's been an honor to undergo this project with the city. My name is Ned Byer. I'm a certified planner. I'm the director of planning for Volker. This will be a high-level presentation, really a sneak preview of a public workshop that's being held one week from today. I believe that's January 25th. It's a Thursday at the City Council Chamber. I believe it begins at 4:00. So a sneak preview, and it makes sense because of your discussion today about growth, infrastructure, utilities, everything that makes a city work successfully. And I guess the question for you is how to accommodate transportation in the city for your residents and visitors today, and then for another 100,000 people on top of that over the next 20, 25 years. So there's a lot of moving parts to this plan, but I'll keep it kind of high level today. I do have about 25 slides to go through. I'm really going to focus on a couple of things here on this agenda. One, existing conditions, but in particular, safety. Because, you know, safety is a big component of this plan, and the types of projects and programs and policies that we identify really address safety. The other thing, too, is addressing growth. And, you know, your presentation this morning on the growth model and the build-out projections, that was part of our analysis. We coordinated our plan with that planning effort. And then I'll get into highlighted projects to see where we are with that. The team, again, I'm with Volker, and we had some other consultants, and I've done a lot of work in Lee County and in Cape Coral before. This slide's important. It really addresses, you know, it's a multi-modal transportation plan, and sometimes even the word "multi-modal," what does that mean? It's kind of a catchphrase for different types of transportation modes. It does include driving and cars, right? But biking, walking, public transit, even water ferry, micro-mobility, I'll get into what that means. But here's some pictures of other types of transportation in city, cities that accommodate transportation. As Laura mentioned, we began our work about a year ago in March, and we spent a lot of time on analyzing the existing traffic, not only safety, but congestion, coordination with the other planning agencies such as the Lee MPO, Department of Transportation, and others that play a role in transportation. As I mentioned, our goals of safety, connectivity, and equity. Let me talk about connectivity. When I talk about connectivity, it's really connectivity with your land use and your growth. A lot of times in transportation, planners speak to connectivity, first mile, last mile projects, you know, from the transit stop to the home or, you know, things like that. But we're really talking about your land use and your future growth and how that's going to work within your transportation system. And then equity, providing a transportation system for all ages and abilities. And also equity in terms of where the transportation is improved in the community. So this is kind of a big deal for the city. This would be the city's first master plan transportation. This is kind of, if I can call it, controlling your own destiny. You know, there's a lot of different agencies in transportation, and some of you sit on the Metropolitan Planning Organization that plays a role, Lehtran, of course, and then the Department of Transportation. But this would be the first time the city actually had its own adopted transportation plan. So that's a big deal. You can really control more your destiny and not rely upon other agencies to implement and plan your system. And part of this is, you know, identifying both projects, policies, and programs, and I'm going to present a few of those. And then, you know, I think it's important, creating a legacy. One of the council members made a good comment about, you know, we're planning our future, right? All this talk about infrastructure, utilities, and transportation is a big, major part of So I'm not going to go through all 249 recommendations here in the plan, but we did address a lot of different modes. You can see everything from intersection improvements, mid-block crossings, recommendations for roundabouts at different locations, signal improvements. You can see some of the other things, pedestrian bridges in the future that may be needed or be considered, lane repurposing, which I'll, it's more like a complete street type of program. I'll get into that a little bit later. And then, of course, a lot of improvements identified for walking and biking. So just kind of go through a few slides about our safety analysis. And, you know, however you look at this data, there's a couple takeaways here. The trend is increasing. It's getting less safe to either drive or bicycle or walk in the city of Cape Coral. We looked at trends over a 10-year period, looking at the most recent data from the Florida Department of Transportation that tracks this. And, you know, however you look and analyze this information, on a per capita basis, Cape Coral, at the moment, is considered, you know, it's a problem, safety. And that's how you measure up with some of your peers, Punta Gorda, Tampa, Fort Myers, you can see, some of the other communities. And then, you know, you just need to read the newspaper, right? And the media and the coverage, it was real sad on December 23rd of this year, there were two pedestrian crashes, one on Pine Island and Burnstour Road, and one on Cape Coral Parkway and Santa Barbara the same day. And these were, you know, serious injuries, and unfortunately, it happens too often. The major takeaway on this slide, you see the chart going up, back 10 years ago, what, 2012, 11 years ago, there were about 1,400 crashes in the city of Cape Coral. It's about five times that now. The number went from about 1,400 to, I think it's over 6,000 now. I think it's like about 6,400 crashes. And that's just in Cape Coral. The map on the left with the colors, we did like a heat map, right? And so when you see the orange and the yellows, that's the area of density of crashes, and you can see in particular, going north-south, that's Del Prado. The east-west, road at the bottom of the screen, that's Cape Coral Parkway. When you live here, no surprises, you know, that's where it's heavily congested, some of the worst hotspots for crashes, and you can see some of the others. And then also, I just wanted to mention, Cape Coral made a top-10 list as a dangerous place to bicycle. You know, not where you want to be, but again, it's, no matter how you look at the data, the trends are not good. And so we're hoping that the transportation plan can help that. Just very quickly, our methodology of analysis and then how we analyze the projects. As a starting point, using the crash data, we identified five corridors and 20 intersections. And we looked at crash data, but we also looked at the proximity to schools. We looked at also, the city, as you know, does have priorities in its Public Works Department for improvements at intersections and things like that. So that was something that we looked at. And then other plans from other agencies, then also projects that are somewhere in the work program. So those were like our priorities of identifying projects. On top of that, when we started prioritizing the projects, we looked at equity, schools, safety and connectivity. You know, in particular, we looked at improvements within a mile of a school, right? And the city's done a great job of making that a priority in the last 10 years. You've really increased your sidewalks to schools. And so that's a great start. And then you can see some of the other criteria. So Laura said to go through this pretty quick, I will, but these are some of the highlighted recommendations I'll share with you. Starting with number one, and Laura's going to make a full presentation after mine about the mobility fee. But, you know, you're struggling with, you have all these needs, and now you have transportation needs on top of that, right? So a mobility fee is something that is being implemented all over the state of Florida successfully. A lot of your peer cities, your size, are implementing a mobility fee. And it's a very flexible fee. It's, it works like an impact fee. The advantage is you can use it not just for capital construction, it can be used for operations, and it can be used for a broader list of projects, not just road widening. It can be used for bike trails, safety improvements, you know, things that this plan advocates and I think the city cares about. So more about that later. So in looking at the crash data, it's clear to us that there's a problem with speed of traffic, right? So one way is, you know, greater enforcement, but, you know, the police, they've got lots of things on their plate, right? Another way to do this is to lower speed limits, especially in residential areas. And from our comments from the public, speeding of traffic, especially around schools, that's like real top concern, and I'm sure you all get calls about that. So there is a way by Florida statutes, the city can, as long as there is a technical engineering analysis of the road corridor, you can adopt a lower speed on city roads. And so we recommend that you do that. Another highlighted project, this is in South Cape Coral. This is along Cape Coral Parkway and the immediately, in the immediate neighborhood. We do identify some intersection improvements and some mid-block crossings, okay? And you know, the mid-block crossings, they're typically, there's some sort of flashing signal, push-button, crosswalks, high visibility. They generally, you know, bring attention that there's going to be a lot of people walking in this vicinity. They work very well. They're used in a lot of places. And then what we call lane repurposing, and you're probably asking yourself, what is It's, whoops, it's basically lane repurposing. It's like a complete street. It's sometimes called a road diet. So there are some opportunities in the city where you have some wide roads on low-volume residential streets that with a paint, you know, and some creative way to redesign the existing street without getting into the high cost of right-of-way and things like that, you could turn a lane into more for walking or biking and not just for automobiles. And there are some opportunities that we show in the plan. So another highlighted project is something called Mobility on Demand. This works a lot like Lyft or Uber, but at a lower cost for the public. And there's two examples locally. One is in Bonita Springs, and one is in Lehigh Acres, and they both have been implemented in the last couple of years, working with Lehtran. And it's a very, I think, user-friendly system, and the ridership, which that's the chart on the right side here, the ridership has been about 2,000 a month, and these are rides in Lehigh Acres. So we've identified this in our plan. We think it's going to be one of the top priorities that the city may want to consider, and Lehtran supports that. There could be like a 50-50 cost sharing and implementing that project. So that's an exciting partnership with Lehtran. Micro-mobility, a lot of cities, and I'm sure you have visited some, they have things like bike-sharing programs, e-scooter share programs, and these are not always big cities, right? There's a lot of peer cities, your size and smaller, that the city manages a program with a private vendor. And for example, if it was a bike-share program, the city would put out an RFP, they would manage the vendor, and it's proven very popular, you know, not just with kids, but I think people visiting. There's plenty of people my age and older that really like doing that sort of thing. So that's going to be a recommended project. Mobility hubs is, it's a new terminology, but basically, it's a, it's a point of emphasis of where, you know, if the city had a, say, a bike-sharing program, or if there's enhanced transit use, it's really a transit stop, but it's more than that because it can accommodate other users and other uses of transportation. We've identified locations in different parts of the community, especially in some of the redeveloping areas and growth areas, for example, Dipliment Parkway, but I'll get more into that. We've got another slide about Dipliment. Okay, this is called the Golf Course Loop, but this is located in South Cape, and basically it's a road diet. And this is identified for micro-mobility, either, you know, walking, biking, scooters, and even golf carts. And, you know, cities your size and smaller, a lot of interest in golf carts. And, you know, there's restrictions, you can't be used on state roads and all that, but the fact is, they're here. And so one of the ideas for the Golf Course Loop, it's really a road diet, but it's on, it's located on Country Club Boulevard from Wildwood Parkway to Palm Tree Boulevard. It's about four miles long, and what's interesting about it, it's relatively low traffic, low speed, right? So the idea would be to, one of those lanes of traffic, it's a two-lane, it's a four-lane roadway now, but one of those lanes in each direction would just be used to accommodate either bike travel, walking, scooters, golf carts. That's the concept. It's relatively inexpensive because you're talking about paint, you know, signage, and it's being done elsewhere. And that's the thing, where there's a lot of best practices about these projects that have worked. So we do identify some other bicycle-walking improvements, a concept of neighborhood greenways. But basically, this is a recognition, there's certain corridors like Del Prado. We don't want to encourage bicycling on Del Prado. In fact, it's, you know, it's pretty difficult to walk on parts of Del Prado, especially the mid and southern portions, but the neighborhood greenway concept is like a parallel route to Del Prado, and it's signed and with buffered bike lanes and just, it's another way to encourage bicycling in that area, but not on Del Prado. We also have identified a number of sidewalks with the priority within a mile of a school. This happens to be on Chiquita Boulevard, but, and it's part of your safe routes to school and the city participation in that Safe Routes to School program. So that's another way to implement the project with the Florida Department of Transportation and others, the school district. And we identify another 20 or so sidewalk connections with schools, off-street trails, this is the Kismet multi-use trail, we've identified that for improvement. And then, this is an important project. This is, it's not a, it's not a project, but it's a plan, and we really feel it's important to have further analysis on Kismet for a couple reasons. It's a, it's a significant, you know, corridor, and it has opportunities for both development and redevelopment. And when you think about the 100,000 people, the 100,000 people, they're going to be moving into this area over the next, say, 20 to 30 years, development's going to have to be a little bit different than it is today. It's probably going to be a little bit denser, maybe, you know, a little bit higher, and with that, the opportunities for walking become really important, right? It's going to become a little bit less car-centric, I guess is a word. So that's something in the future that we recommend that the city implement. And, you know, some of these are pretty visionary, right? Like the water ferry. And this is something that would have to be probably beyond the city, working with both the MPO and the Florida Department of Transportation. But I've got to tell you, I've worked in other communities where it started as like, we really can't do this thing, and then they're doing this thing. And even though Tampa-St. Pete is a larger market, that's been a very success story, and not just a big ferry, but you can actually have more like a water taxi service. So we're actually recommending, we recommended different sites in South Cape and a water taxi service to Fort Myers. So you've seen the slide, but this is, again, there's 249 recommended projects and programs, policies. I just wanted to give you a flavor of some of the, some of the projects. Some of these are, you know, kind of visionary in the future. Some are real basics, like more sidewalks by schools. And again, this is, will become, once adopted, the city's master transportation plan, first time, right? So that's pretty exciting, some of the highlighted recommendations. And then just very quickly, this final month of our work, we're developing an implementation plan, including, you know, matching funding sources to your projects, looking at your local funds, but then also looking at other people's money, like the Florida Department of Transportation, especially the federal government now. You've heard a lot about the bipartisan infrastructure tax, or not tax, program, and that's been, there's a number of grant opportunities there that we're researching, and we'll be making some recommendations. And then finally, wrapping up here, this is the project schedule. So you see, Public Workshop Number 2 is next Thursday night at the City Council Chamber at 4:00 PM, and you can see a number of presentations, and so you'll see this again, or a version of this again, this Cape Coral Transportation Advisory Committee, February 7th, tentative date, Cape Coral Committee of the Whole. And then we'll be coming back to a City Council presentation, a full council presentation again, in either February or March. So thank you for your attention. I know it's been a long day, and this is a lot of information, but I'm here to answer questions, and I know Laura's been, she's been the project manager for this, and Laura's really gotten involved, and it's got the city staff, her team, involved with the project too. So it's been a real, real good project. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your discussion. The mayor stepped away for a moment. I guess at this point, I'll open up the floor for discussion. Mr. Stineke.
In our backup material, it's Slide 107, it's your results of existing conditions graph, and it talks about the percent change in total crashes per thousand people, 2012 to 2022. And when I look at, when I look at the other cities that are on the list there, and I see this as a percentage change, percentages can throw us awry a little bit. Real numbers can help. Is there any way to get some real numbers on this? And one of the things that, the reason I bring it up is, when you think about density and miles of roads that exist, in some of those cities that I see, there were certainly additional miles of road added, where the city of Cape Coral has a relatively fixed miles of road. And so as population increases, it increases the density per mile, if you will, per road. And I'm wondering if that's, if that's available, that we could, that we could kind of see the actual numerics of it in comparison to the amount of roads. Certainly the more dense the traffic is, I would think that the number of crashes would increase. And so then, does it become a matter of traffic control devices? Does it give reason to look at road widening, to add additional lanes, to accommodate the density of the traffic? So that's just something that kind of hits my mind, real numbers versus, versus just percentage.
Yeah, no, great question. In fact, you know, in reviewing this slide, I was like, okay, I know someone's going to ask, how many crashes are you talking about? So I did, I thought I'd mentioned in the presentation, but in 20, it's over a 10-year period, right? And so in, I think it was 2012 was the first year, there were about 1,400 crashes in Cape Coral. Oh, that, oh, it's the next slide. Thank you. Here we go. And then in 2022, you know, it rose to over 6,000 crashes. I think there's about 6,400. So, I mean, that was real data, and we do have that, and so we'll make sure we do a better job on explaining that. And then I think I just wanted to address quickly about, you know, congestion, and when things get more congested, it's going to increase crashes. Not necessarily, because the one thing about more congestion, it means generally, traffic's moving slower. And so there's a, there's another graphic on here. It shows speed of traffic, you know, when it's compared to like 10 miles per hour, 20 miles per hour, versus 40 or 50 miles per hour, it's far more dangerous for people biking or walking, for that matter, in a car. Because we didn't just, you know, these are car crashes. we didn't just, you know, these are car crashes we're analyzing. They're not just, you know, bikes running into bikes or anything. These are car crashes, so, yeah.
So when you, when you tie those, those two together, right? So the, the one with the bar chart that is horizontal, that is basing it off of per thousand, per capita, you know, growing in the city. So as the city's growing, compared to other cities that are growing, like Fort Myers, Sarasota, St. Petersburg, Ponte Gorda, how, how are our residents and businesses doing traffic-wise compared to those other cities? And even in here, you can see the state of Florida, as, as we all grow together. And then the, the second one has the actual amount of crashes that are in there. So he gives you kind of, kind of both. I, I will say, and I know we don't have it today, but Mayor Gunther and I, and a couple other staff members, sat through a, a presentation that the Florida League of Cities does every year, where they, they go out and survey, like, the top 10 cities. And they, they ask the, the population that, you know, they do a select survey analysis of a series of different questions. And then what they offer to the cities is, in any place where your city deviated from the norm, like a statistical deviation, they will sit down with you and say, hey, just so you know, your resident population really thinks you're not acting like the norm. And so when we sat down with them this year, the mayor, myself, I think Maureen and Persis at the time was with us, we were, as far as what the city, our citizens want us to spend more money on, nine out of the 10 cities wanted public safety, fire and police. Well, we know that for decades, that has been our number one priority, and we are constantly building new fire stations and constantly building, adding fire, you know, houses and, you know, firefighters, police officers. The reason that they shared that with us is because our citizens this year, the number one thing that they wanted us to spend money on was transportation.
Excuse me, if, if I can chime in quickly on some of the safety numbers. Councilmember Steinkie, yes, of course, I would be happy to provide you additional context into those numbers. And I believe the key word utilized here is context. And just looking at two graphs on a screen, I think the important narrative to take away is how are we doing? What is the temperature of the city, and are we a safe city to move about? And overwhelmingly, the answer has been no, and we're getting worse. So I would be happy to send the clerk the existing conditions report, which shows multiple narratives, background data that supports all of this, just as reference.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I have a question. You said earlier that speed changes could have an impact, and better striping and things like that. The majority of our city is residential streets. That's the majority. And I think we do good striping, and we have great signage. I think what we need is more officers doing traffic. And not just on the main roads, but in neighborhoods. I was hit at my mailbox on a residential street. Luckily, I didn't get hurt, the vehicle's mirror hit me. But people are doing 40 miles an hour on residential streets. I mean, striping's not going to change that, lowering the speed to 25 isn't going to change that. I think if we invest in anything, it should be more traffic police and harder enforcement on, on people driving. I've witnessed at many intersections, you know, the light turns red, but you can count at least two more cars go through every time. And I just think we have to, like our city manager said, we have an extreme, very safe city. We've invested heavily in our police and fire department. And we are a very safe city, but I think we need to maybe put a little more emphasis on, on vehicles. And, you know, we have bike paths along a lot of these residential roads, but if people are going 20 miles an hour over the speed limit, and they're trying to text at the same time, then they're going to chance of killing someone on a bicycle, which has, you know, we've had some events that were pretty close to that. Thank you.
Yeah, no, good comment. Kind of interesting, in going to some of these conferences, they, they talk about speed of traffic and accidents and so forth. During COVID, traffic volumes nearly everywhere for about a two-year period took quite a dip, right? And it was interesting. Crashes went, went down as well. And then now the return is back up, and it's, it's growing. But the point was made that when traffic volumes were reduced, people just, they sped. And this is pretty, you know, you've talked to the Department of Transportation, they have statistics, people traveled faster. There was just less cars around, and so they were moving. And then it seems like some of that has continued, even though the traffic volumes are back. So it's, it's really interesting, but good comment. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinkie.
Thank you. In our backup material, it's, I think it's Page 109, it's that heat map that you had, modal transportation master plan, it's a draft made 2023. In regard to Councilmember Shepherd's comments, I, I agree, it's mostly neighborhood traffic. That heat map is extremely telling that it is main artery oriented and intersection oriented.
Yep.
And so, and so from the standpoint of increased safety, it would seem like the focus would be on the arterial roadways, and especially at the major intersections along those arterial roadways. Is, is that?
Yeah, no, good, good takeaway. You're exactly right, and that's what the plan does. I think that, you know, in trying to just show kind of a representation of the types of projects, I didn't really focus on, like, the number of mid-block crossings on Del Prado, for example, which there's a lot that we recommend, or on Cape Coral Parkway, or intersection improvements, other than, I didn't go through the list of the 20, you know, intersections that we focused our improvements on. But we, we did that in our analysis and corridors. And, no, you're spot on with that. And so a good part of our recommendations actually do focus on exactly what you want focused on. The only thing I'll mention, though, is, like Cape Coral Parkway, right? That's a, it's a state road. So there's some, I'm sorry, that's the county road. But like Pine Island, 78, right? That's a state road, you've got a presentation tomorrow on that. And so, and some of those corridors, the city's going to have to work, like, with the Department of Transportation, or, you know, Lee County and so forth. But, you know, you do that all the time on, on different services. So, yeah, but thank you, good comment.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation. There's a lot of information in there, and it's difficult to kind of narrow down the scope, but I, I see it as two things. I see it as safety, and I see it as amenity-based presentation, right? I'd really like to try to separate the two in our discussions about how to move forward, because, you know, based on what you said, obviously, safety, number one, right? And I'd also like maybe to see police departments' participation in that. Obviously, that's going to be a big piece of the safety side of this statistically. And what grants are currently awarded to the city, based on these numbers already? I'd like to know that as well. But the mid-block or description of it with the crosswalks?
Yeah.
I know they just instituted a bunch of those on 41 and Fort Myers, and I'd be interested to see how that, you know, we could probably get some takeaways from them as well. I know they also reduce speed limits in the neighborhoods, and I'd be curious to see what the stats say now. They've had that in place for quite some time now, where they reduced it to 25 miles an hour in the residential areas that were 30. And I'd be curious to see if they had any impact, you know, on statistics with regard to crashes before we even thought about doing that. But anyway, thank you for your presentation. There's a lot there, I'll be looking at it more in depth in the future. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Councilmember Hayden.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, and I, I think the whole point of all this information is, is, you know, we look at our future, is to look differently at it. The idea is to get cars off the road, you know, whether it's bicycling pedestrians, e-vehicles of some kind, mass transit, because that will certainly help. Look, the fact of the matter is, Florida leads the nation in pedestrian and bicycle crashes and fatalities. Lee County is usually number one in the state in that, and we factor into that. So we, so we know we have a problem. And the multimodal designations help us look at ways that people might have an alternative way to get themselves from one place to another. We've had conversations about mixed-use facilities where people live, work, and play in one area, that helps lessen that count. We, we know we have an issue with too many vehicles on the road. So that, you know, so this is just a sampling of where we might be able to take our future in terms of getting people to think about alternative ways that not only improves public safety, helps the environment, improves health, but it all factors into how we look at things. So, you know, for me, rather than looking at more police officers on a particular street, the whole point of this exercise is to eliminate the risk and look at other opportunities that we might have. So I appreciate, I appreciate the data, and what we might be able to look at and, and take this, and take this information, and as we do develop our transportation master plan, how the multimodal plan factors into, factors into all that. So, thank you.
You're, you're welcome. And I just wanted to, again, just say that, you know, once adopted, I mean, this is your transportation master plan. It's, it's called multimodal, but it is all the modes. And what's, what's really great for the city is, for, for the first time, you're going to have your own plan, really controlling your own destiny. Because as you know, and representatives that sit on the MPO, the MPO doesn't address a lot of what you care about in the city, right? It looks at the major artery, arterial roads and highways and connectivity with Charlotte County and Lee County and Collier County, the regional roads, and Burnt Store Road and things like that. But there's a lot of other transportation use in your community that you have direct say about how people, what the speed limit should be posted, you know, how often you resurface roads, where you put sidewalks, how you improve intersections. That type of detail in transportation never gets to the MPO. Or if it does, it's more like, you know, a funding recommendation, but they just never get to that level or, or detail that you will. So this is a really great, you know, step for the city, and, you know, it's going to take some time. Everything's like incremental progress, right? And you're not going to do it all at once, but this is, this will be a really good step for the city.
Just to clarify, this is, this is our master plan, or this is the proposed master plan?
No, we're, we're, we're in the process, if you see the schedule on the back, this is where we're at with our transportation master plan. So we have presentations to council today on the 18th. There'll be one on March 6th and March 20th, and then a, a public workshop to the community, which has been announced on January 25th.
I mean, for example, there's a funding source in there that we don't currently have adopted, correct? The, the mobility fee, that's not something we currently?
So the mobility, we're going to have a presentation on that. That's a, basically a replacement for the impact fee. Impact fees are for capacity carrying enhancements only, where the mobility fee allows you to get outside of adding more vehicular stuff and provide these alternatives like sidewalks, crosswalks around different things to?
That's an additional fee that has not been adopted yet?
It's a, it's not an additional fee, it's a replace, basically a replacement. So you, you basically get rid of the transportation or the road impact fee.
Right.
You adopt the mobility fee, and then the mobility fee does what the impact fee did, what has a greater opportunity for expenditures.
More flexibility in its use, but the amount stays the same?
Yeah. Okay. You said it, you said it.
The flexibility expands with use, does the amount increase?
That would be a vote of?
Well, that's what I was getting at. In other words, that's not been adopted yet. Yeah, that's, okay, I'm just making sure of, I'm just?
We haven't even, we haven't even?
Okay, well, you said this is our master plan. Again, I'm, I'm new to the table, right? So I'm just curious, am I looking at something that still has modification potential?
Yes.
Or am I looking at something just to get my head around?
No, that, we have a, we have a whole process to go through.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We need a mobility plan, and if you want to get to mobility fees, and Laura will, you know, discuss all that. I, I just wanted to make one comment, Councilman, I, I don't know if your statement about looking at officers was related to the statement I made from the FLC. I wasn't recommending that we reduce police officers to fund more transportation stuff. I was just letting you all know that when we, when we met with them, they were saying, compared to the rest of the top 10 cities, where their residents were looking for more public safety-related, we were a statistical anomaly, because our residents responded and said, we need more transportation projects.
And just for some historical information, Councilmember Carr, since you are new, I guess, it's about 18 months ago, I guess, C-TAC started, one of the initiatives I know I brought forward to see if the rest of the C-TAC members wanted to move forward with a transportation master plan. As you have heard here today, there are a lot of components when it comes to planning for the future of the city. This was one that we've never done before, and something that we embarked upon. So I just wanted to take this opportunity as well to thank staff and everyone involved to get us to where we are today, because once we eventually adopt this master plan, I think it will not only help us in making decisions, but the future councils with this particular plan on how to move forward. Now, with the fee, multimodal fee, that's something that was changed in the legislation here recently, where we can adopt a multimodal plan, like we are, and those particular fees could be the same, or we could change them. That, that depends on council's direction. But it opens the door for more flexibility, as you had mentioned, of how to disperse those funds, where before it was mainly for capacity needs, multimodal needs, there's, there's a vast other areas that we could use that funding for.
Thank you. Like I said, I, this is a lot of information, and I haven't, I apologize, I haven't seen, I have seen this, I haven't gotten into it in too much depth. I'm familiar with some of these concepts, both from a public safety perspective and a, an amenity perspective. So I guess I just was wondering if, if there was going to be opportunity to have input or not. I mean, obviously, I could be, I could participate more or less, but, you know, some of those things, I think, detract from safety. Some of the transportation amenity elements could actually increase our safety problem. And that's kind of some of the discussions I'd like to get more information on. Might be able to be done outside of our meeting, but just my mindset, I guess.
Yeah, I think this is a work in progress, and eventually, council will make the ultimate decision of the plan and adopt the plan. So I think there's still, still more opportunity for you to weigh in on the topic.
Any other comments?
See you in none, thank you, sir, appreciate the?
Thank you very much.
Presentation, and we look forward to seeing you again.
Okay, thank you.
Again, Laura Dodd, Principal Transportation Planner. And if I can just address some of the comments made prior to my presentation, one of the city's worst-held secrets is that I was the senior transportation planner for the city of Port St. Lucie prior to my employment here, where I was the project manager and worked in adopting and implementing both a multimodal plan and a mobility plan and fee. And admittedly, a lot of cities are going this way, but you should really pat yourselves on the back, because to get to this point is a daunting task, and takes a lot of time and understanding and flexibility. So I appreciate council and, and acknowledge that from you all. Councilmember Carr, I believe, if you're receptive, I owe you a one-on-one to go over a little bit of the background. So that being said, I'll launch into the most interesting part of the presentations today, which is road impact fees. today, which is road impact fees versus mobility plans and mobility fees. So we know that a road impact fee follows the Florida Impact Fee Act, and as such, it is a one-time fee leveraged to offset the impacts associated with development. That is no different from our transportation impacts. And this was, um, I know you've heard this phrase multiple times today, but this was "The promise of growth funds growth." So let's focus directly on what road impact fees are in the pros and cons list. So from the pros side, road impact fees have been around and they have formed, uh, the basis of something that is an easy fee to implement and update. Um, from the con, from the con side, we can look to this chart to the right and we can see that the reality of what road impact fees do is they create a downward spiral of chasing our own tail. So essentially, we approve development and add more traffic, and then we have to fund road capacity if the impact fee leverage was enough to cover it. And then that in turn funds more approved development. This also can result in overplanning for roadway capacity needs and leads to a narrow vision for what the future network may mean. So that may mean future transportation technologies and our ability to adapt to those technologies. So I'm going to go over this quickly so you have a background as reference. So in the beginning, in, can I see that? In, in 1985, the state mandated concurrency, and what concurrency equated to was adding road capacity. We can tell straight by acknowledging, by looking at that, that is a very narrow viewpoint. Um, in bouncing forward to the 90s, we started to see some issues associated with those systems. Those issues being that essentially, the road concurrency and level of service standards started pushing and encouraging development to go further and further from urban centers where transit could be accommodated and that road capacity was available. This often created sprawl and disinvestment in city centers. So lastly, in, in the most recent times, we saw a boom, a bust, and back to the drawing board. And what I mean by that is Florida in the 2000s saw phenomenal growth boom, and then there shortly after, we saw the Great Recession. And at that point in time, it was determined that the current system was not working as well. And around 2011, 2015, the state mandated concurrency was eliminated through the Community Planning Act, and it was recognized that it is the ability of a local government to adopt alternative mobility funding systems, also known as mobility fees. So this quick timeline shows that the city acted very much in accordance to what that timeline I just explained is. So you can see that around 1985, when the city adopted its road impact fees, through the 90s, um, they maintained, um, road impact fees with some, uh, increases, um, and then further, the road impact fees increased again in the mid 2000s with the population boom. But as we started reaching the Great Recession, um, transportation concurrency busted and we started seeing, um, few, fewer updates to our road impact fee schedule, which would coincide with the idea that if, if we are in a recession, we do not want to consistently be charging businesses more to come into the city. So in 2011, what that equates to is the ability for a community to retain concurrency or start shifting towards alternative methods. So let's talk about mobility plans, mobility fees. So what a mobility plan is, is a long-term plan that focuses, or shifts focus, rather, on moving vehicles to moving people in all modes, creating a more balanced system that considers reducing congestion and submo, supporting the community's growth. It is required by Florida statute to serve as the basis for the development of the mobility fee. In essence, mobility plan develops mobility fee. So what is the mobility fee? It is an alternative to transportation concurrency and road impact fees, as the city manager was kind enough to already go over. This is a repeal and replacement of your current road impact fee system and transportation concurrency system. And it is, um, it is a new fee that is a one-time fee paid by development or redevelopment, but not an additional fee. So this funds a variety of infrastructure, and that may include policies, programs, or services. Those three items are important because we know that a lot goes on past just the cartway on the street. There's a lot that deals with land uses, um, additional technology, and implementing, uh, mobility hubs, and new nodes to help move people about in safer and alternative methods other than auto-centric. So why? Why are mobility fees becoming so popular? Well, it's detailed to become the blueprint, or the fingerprint, rather, for a city. These plans are designed to best meet the needs of each city, so as they are developed, they're tailored to what each city sees in its future, in the long run. It creates a city-controlled funding mechanism and opens up opportunities for mobility projects. And as I mentioned, it replaces transportation concurrency and the difficulty in tracking and implementing proportionate fair share systems and impact fee systems. So let's talk differences. Here's a couple of projects that a mobility fee will fund. You can see that this is pretty far-ranging. It has quite a bit of items you may not necessarily would think would be directly related to, uh, transportation. Some of those may be green infrastructure or beautification projects, others may be parking garages. Looking at this same list, what will road impact fee fund? You can see that it's substantially reduced, and I believe that I was pretty lenient in showing what it actually could still cover based upon the old road impact fee system. So to summarize that even further, to break it down, what does that mean? A mobility fee, um, by and large, has a lot more flexibility and adaptability to communities' needs moving forward. So where has this been done? How new is this and who else is doing this? This is around 10 to 15 years of communities or counties within the state of Florida that have shifted from traditional road impact fees to mobility fees or multimodal fee funding systems. So while this may be considered still a new concept, um, to Cape Coral as a new concept, by and large, there's multiple communities throughout the state that have already started moving this way to essentially harness their own destiny and start implementing projects immediately that best serve their community. So an example of a city very much like Cape Coral, our own, Port St. Lucie. Port St. Lucie has experienced substantial growth and is very much the same demographic and profile and needs that Cape Coral has expressed. Why did the city of Port St. Lucie choose to move over to a multimodal plan and then immediately after, rather, a mobility plan? Well, the main concerns, and you may find these echoing of your, of our own citizens, it was to manage growth and smartly address the much-needed future transportation challenges. There were citizen concerns about lack of mobility and congestion, and they were receiving low benchmarks on the National Community Survey for ease of travel. The impact fee was found to be rigid and inequitable and hard to implement, especially in proportionate fair share system. And then finally, the mobility fee system offered greater transparency, more options, and faster improvements for the city to keep up with its growing need. So here's an example of the National Community Survey around the time where we were implementing the mobility plan. Um, you can see that when the National Community Survey starts to show citizens, um, do not favor or see a direct need to improve the overall quality of transportation system, by the time it hits that mark, you're already several years back. You're already several years from where you should have started to start getting it back on the path to improve that number. However, if you look in the bottom left-hand corner, you can see that after the integration over to mobility fees, the city saw substantial revenue projected for the, those fiscal years to start pulling that, that number back up. So this really dovetails well into what we saw of the past and also where we want to see ourselves in the future and what kind of legacy we want to build for the city. The streets of the past, uh, often exacerbated high fatalities and injury, injury rates. It encouraged by design, higher speeds, fast, you know, faster-moving vehicles and longer trips. It was auto-centric, in short. Streets of the future often include lower speeds in urban areas, um, safety as the main component and the core of a lot of these plans, safety. Vision zero, target zero, and of course, equity for all users. So here's a couple of projects. These are not indicative to projects that the city of Cape Coral would necessarily want to implement, but these are some projects that have been implemented in Florida and other communities to address their needs. So you can see the city of Altamont Springs Multimodal Way, where they provided for low-speed vehicles and electric multimodal lanes. A parking structure. Mobility on demand, West Palm Beach. Um, this could serve as a circulator in some of your more urban areas to assist when someone parks their vehicle and then give them an option to circulate around a downtown district. And, and of course, uh, micro-transit, the starting of a service such as this for mobility on demand. Pardon me. Another great example that really, um, shows how mobility fees are able to meet multiple strategic initiatives is beautification and the development of linear parks where streetscapes can be formed to become a, a place. Rather than just a place to drive your auto, it becomes a place where your kids can walk, enjoy nature, canopy trees, things of that sort. And also, active movement. Another example, city of St. Augustine, we just recently completed, um, our, um, South Cape Downtown Parking Plan, and this matches well with the idea of the park wants environment to reduce congestion in our urban centers. So I'm going to go quickly through this because these are important to note, but not really the definition of the differences between mobility fees and, um, road impact fees. What we've read... ...of service capacity standards is a quality of service standard adopted as the measurement for how well your system is operating. What this does is it's a focus on safety for all modes. And, um, really, what it means is maintaining a high quality of life for all users across the city, across all modes. How does legislation act with this? And I know this is probably difficult to read, but on the left, the city of St. Augustine was applauded for their innovation techniques in adopting. Quality of service standards where roads that had no additional room or could be widened adopted these same standards to make a more complete street. Versus the city of Orlando, seeing that there were issues with level of service adopted, tried to repeal and remove them, however, were not because there was no measurable benchmark. This also coincides with, uh, multiple agency plans. So vision zero and target zero plans. Um, looking to the left and over here for the vision zero plan, the quality of service standards dovetail well into that, and also the reduction in speed limits, um, for safety characteristics. So I won't belabor this issue because there are, um, roads where widening, are, widenings are in fact needed, which we've termed mobility corridors, because you can never really get away from the necessity to widen. However, as another point of consideration, there is a reimagining of the right-of-way where vehicles travel at targeted or posted speeds, and it creates safer streets for all. Ironically, also the name of a grant through the MPO right now that will provide considerable funding. What does that look like? You can see that can be something as simple as lane repurposing and modification, but I'd like to draw your attention to the graphic on the right where we actually start measuring capacity, not based upon sole vehicles, but capacity by total users across all modes. And you can see that by retrofitting many of our streets by quality of service standards, the total capacity is substantially more with a street retrofit. So what does it mean to develop a mobility plan, mobility fee? I'm not going to walk through every single one of these steps one by one, but rather I would like to express the timeframe to complete this, this kind of plan is approximately one year. Cape Coral does have an advantage in the data that it has already gained. So like any planner, I have to end on, um, be quoted by Daniel Burnham, who states, "To make no little plans, but rather to make large plans that continue out our legacy." And that is what I'd like to echo through this presentation. So that being said, what can I answer for you?
Thank you for the presentation. Uh, do we have any questions from council or any comments? Councilmember Cosden.
Just real quick, help me understand, is the multimodal master plan the same thing as a mobility plan?
Excellent question. They are two separate things. So the multimodal transportation master plan is a guiding document, whereas the mobility plan is a legislative document. I'll give you an example. The multimodal plan has, um, identified projects which can, can carry directly over into your mobility plan, which sets at planning level costs to help set the, um, fee that the mobility fee will charge new development. Does that make sense?
It does. Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion on this particular topic, Mr. City Manager?
Not today.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to item six, is citizens' input time. Citizens' input, it's a maximum of 60 minutes, is set for input on citizens' own matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name. We will have, uh, a staff member, uh, provide a microphone for anyone who wishes to, uh, participate, and you can do it, uh, if you'd like to stand, uh, at your seat. And also, the city clerk, uh, will keep, uh, the time for the three minutes.
Thank you. Looks like I'm the only speaker, so you could probably give me more than three minutes since I really haven't organized my thoughts too well. But you probably won't. My question about budget, uh, unless I read the chart wrong, uh, on chart 60, looks like once the FEMA funds are replaced of our reserves, we'll have $27 million of extra surplus funds? That's overage and 39 million the next year, so that's $66 million of available funds. That, these are not just surpluses, these are excess surplus, the way I read it, but maybe that's not right. And I looked at the, the, uh, the millage rate. If you're using the same millage rate for that chart showing an extra, only eight million more for this coming year in, uh, property tax revenue, that's way underestimated. We all know Mr. Mason is very conservative. that's way underestimated. And we all know Mr. Mason is very conservative, and to me, it's ultra-conservative. I think he made $15 million this year at the same millage rate, and now you're only projecting eight million growth at the same millage rate? I think at the rollback rate, it would produce that eight million dollar growth, my own opinion. The other one, the public service tax is way underestimated as well. And a question, you know, we allocated that first 500 kilowatt to the charter school, but the, Mr. Mason mentioned, LCEC changed the rate structure. They increased the value of the dollars going to the first 500 kilowatt by 49 percent. So are we still giving all that money to the charter school? Are we going to set that back to just a dollar limit at this point? Because they changed the rate structure. So that would really hurt the city's general fund if that much went to the charter school. So something to discuss there. I'll talk tomorrow about some of the, where I think the decision points are, but obviously I already mentioned you should use the rollback rate. It is an election year. Most people running for office will go with the rollback rate. And I'm kind of curious about with the UEP rates, I haven't heard anybody talk about whether or not that $30,000 to $40,000 increase between impact fees and the UEP cost per individual or household, is that going to slow growth? A $40,000 impact or financing it over 20 years is $100,000. Has anybody analyzed that? I know they don't owe that bill, I think, until July, so we really don't know if people are defaulting or not paying their bills. So I think that will slow down growth.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm sorry? I'll give you one more minute. Turn my mic back on. One minute, please, City Clerk.
Okay. Couple other side questions. Enclave incorporation, I know you're going to Tallahassee next week. We did a lot of study on incorporating enclaves. I haven't heard anything more about of that in a couple of years. That would help our tax base to get all those enclaves. I know we asked for letters, see if they would voluntary annex. If not, we have to get approval from Tallahassee to annex. What happened to that? The other one, I like the water taxi ID idea, but the bottom line, the root cause of traffic safety is that people in Florida drive nuts. I live by the yacht club area. There's dedicated bicycle lanes. I won't use them. It's too crazy. And so you got to be a little careful and, you know, stop, stop, what do you call it? Speed limit signs are just a guideline here, so doesn't really make much difference. The water taxi idea is good, but go all the way to Fort Myers Beach. And it looks like we need more collision repair shops from that study. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to participate in citizens' input? Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. Is there any discussion on citizens' input? Okay, seeing none, time to place a future meeting. Day two of the budget workshop is scheduled for Friday, January 19, 2024, beginning 9:00 a.m. here at Mercola Market at 125 Southwest Third Place. Cape Coral, do I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.